Everyone should now be on.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code, Ordinances, Chapter 7-1.4, the Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening on August 20th, 2025, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearings will be followed by our regular meeting, and in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commissioners. Could staff please identify themselves?
Eleanor Idemary with the Environment Department.
Max Erlich with the Environment Department.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll call the role of Commissioners who are present. Commissioner Sullivan.
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Laney.
Amy Laney.
Commissioner Wilson.
Mike Wilson.
Commissioner Conan.
Conan Thirvingadum.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi.
Steve Estes Smargiazi.
Okay, great. I think we're ready. So first item on the agenda this evening is notice of intent for DEP file number 0062037, Boston File Number 2025-012 from 686 Architects on behalf of David Collins for the demolition of an existing building and construction of a multifamily building with accompanying ground floor level and training parking and drainage improvements at 5 Warren Ave and Hyde Park. Resource areas are bordering land subject to flooding, 100-foot buffer to bank, 25-foot riverfront area, and 25-foot waterfront area. This matter has been, was continued from the June 25th, 2025 hearing. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
William Christopher, 686 Architects, and James Christopher.
Great. Anyone else?
Our engineers were supposed to be here, but they're not here, so we'll go without them.
Okay, 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 let's give it a, give it a shot here. Okay, so as I said, we had a hearing in June, and you went away for a little while here and revised the NOI. So we had some questions at that hearing, and I think we should just address the questions that we asked. So we were looking to see, and I'll let you go over this, looking to see accurate figures on the pervious and impervious surface changes?
That's all within the application.
Okay.
The net result is actually an increase in impervious area. There's an existing driveway right now without curbs or anything that is within the 25-foot water riverfront. That is being removed completely. We are not going to be impacting the riverfront at all. The impervious area is the actual footprint of the building because we've brought all of the parking inside of the building, so we will minimal impact on the site in total. The only changes to the site within the 25-foot front barrier are plantings that we're putting in that we've gone over with you. At our last hearing, you had recommended adding some more trees and bushes, which we have done, and that's in the slides that we submitted along with the application.
Okay. Okay, how about, and Eleanor, you may need to help out a little bit here. So we're gonna have to be racing through the NOI here. The alternatives analysis, how did we come out on that?
Yeah, that was submitted as well. That was sent into you guys last week, so I can read it, but it's all in here. Primarily, there are, you know, there are four alternatives that we had put forward. One of them was a no build at all, just leave the site the way it is. The other was to create a storm management system that collects all the runoff on, from the existing structure, redirects everything to a collection. This option would improve the stormwater management, but it would be cost prohibitive as a result in improving the long-term care of this property. Third alternative was a previous project that had been submitted to you, which was a much larger project, and it had all of the parking outside of the building. Went within the 25-foot riverfront area around to the back of the building, and it was pretty large. So what we chose to do, which is alternative number four, this alternative would develop a project that is completely inside, completely outside the riverfront area, remove all surface parking, install additional vegetation, protect the riverbank, refabric the existing chain link fence that exists, post signs to minimize people having access to the river until such time as the water quality improves. And this is the one that we're recommending because
Buddy, yeah, buddy, it may be worthy to mention that we also took into account the commission's requests to make sure that we eliminated the filling as yet a further alternative to the original design. And we also prepared a stormwater drainage design consistent with Boston Water and Sewer Regulations, and we got rid of the overflow in the rear. We now have an overflow proposed into the city's drainage system. We've extended the, we've enlarged the drainage system to be 20% above the minimum requirements of Boston Water and Sewer. So we've eliminated any type of erosion that could happen in the back. Hopefully that was helpful. I apologize for interrupting.
Well, that's Paul Trulli, civil engineer on the project, and is adding to the conversation is always beneficial to us all.
Okay, great. So Paul, I think that addresses the question about the issues we had about stabilizing the bank and discouraging, well, at least stabilizing the bank, correct?
Yes, it does. So in other words, we propose no additional fill. I'm sorry, I'm a dumb civil engineer. Sometimes I think maybe putting in some grading and putting some loam and seeds a good idea, but I recognize that not, not touching is better than touching.
Okay. And what about discouraging residents from accessing the river?
So I think you, buddy, mentioned that we are leaving the old fence, putting a new fence in front of it. And then the other thing that, like you said, there's no proposed exterior surfaces, there's no exterior out, there's no exterior play areas. There's no exterior doors, there's no exterior patios. And the whole plan is that this is not going to be accessible to the tenants, to the owners.
We're also adding signs to the fence telling people to stay away.
Okay. And is this the fence that gives us the eight-inch clearance for habitat?
It is.
Okay, perfect. Okay, um, did we get a full stormwater management plan submitted?
You did.
Okay, thank you. How about two silt fences included in the plans? One for construction work, one for landscaping?
Absolutely, they've been added to the drawings.
As a matter of fact, their locations were adjusted to make sure that we work within existing vegetation and the existing fencing.
Okay, and I'll probably, I'll let other commissioners talk about this one. Landscaping plan leads to, needs to be less formal and blend in with the existing conditions better. Let's see. Talked about more shrubbery and other tree species that grow faster to stabilize the bank quicker, so we'll let the other commissioners talk about that. Okay, and we did talk about the order conditions being incorporated in the master deed. Was that, this was a condominium project, if I remember correctly?
I don't know that a final determination is made on whether or not it's going to be condominiums rental or whether or not the applicant is going to live in it themselves, so I would, I don't know that we've made that final decision, so I don't know that we can make that a condition. Other than, of course, recording the order of conditions, which is going to be required and which will be done.
Yeah, and I think the order condition would say something like, the order conditions will, well, there'll be perpetual maintenance obligations emanating from the order conditions. So I think the the condition will say something like, if it's a condo, it'll be included in the master deed. If it's not a condo, it will be included in. And help me out, Eleanor, where would we?
I could help you, I could help you with that, Commissioner. So it's part of the chain of title when it gets recorded regardless.
I understand, I understand that. A lot of times people don't look in the chain of title. We try to do a little bootstrap approach here. Yeah, yeah. So we want to make sure that it's in, whoever is managing the, managing the property has the order conditions in their maintenance folder, just to, just to be sure.
I will tell you then, so it's great that you requested that, so what we'll do is I'll be the one preparing the condominium site plan, and I'll make sure to reference the Conservation Commission requirements on the condominium site plan.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Yeah, so for, for this project, I would perhaps recommend, if the commission is open to it, including a condition requiring quarterly environmental monitoring. Just given how small the site is and the proximity to the Napanzit, I think that having reports come to commission staff, let's say, four times a year would be helpful, and then that way we can see how everything is progressing. I would also recommend having a condition that requires either flagging or some other sort of sort of physical marker of the riverfront area, so that when construction commences, there's a visual boundary for people to understand where the limit of work is. And I would also recommend requiring an onsite meeting with commission staff to check all erosion and sediment controls before any work begins.
Okay. Okay, so you understand that environmental monitor condition. That's something that we've done in sensitive areas such as this, that's in close quarters, which is, and Eleanor can help you on that, it's hiring somebody who comes by. In this case, I think you're suggesting quarterly, right, Eleanor? Did you say four times a year?
Yeah, I think four times a year would be appropriate.
Yeah, can I inquire with the commission, as a registered professional engineer and somebody who does an awful lot of environmental work, would I qualify as the responsible person to be able to prepare that report?
Yep. Eleanor, what do we usually do? Is it a third-party neutral, or is it someone involved with the project?
I think generally we would prefer for it to be a third party, if possible, just to keep it neutral. But the, the condition, the language in the condition has requirements that the, that the qualifications be submitted to commission staff and approved before the work can commence.
Okay, okay, okay. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, it was an updated plan showing the overflow into the commission's drainage system submitted?
Yes, sir, I believe it was. I haven't made my formal submission to BWSC at this time because we don't have the fire protection designed, but I believe that the, we, the more, because we took, so we took care of that. We eliminated that overflow into the back that I had originally proposed. I found there was a drain in the street, so yes, I believe that's part of the package.
Right. And there was, there was a catch basin up that street too. Your driveway into the parking area, the catch basin isn't within the driveway?
I can tell you, two seconds if you'd like.
I'll make it three, whatever.
So generous, Mr. Sullivan.
That's the way it is. I got an engineer and two architects, God help us.
No, no, Mr. Sullivan, it is not. The driveway entrance is to the left of the building, and the catch basin is more towards the center of the structure.
Okay. And were you, were you doing something with the sidewalks themselves there? I forget, we had other projects that had that.
Yeah, there are no currently any side, well, it's an asphalt walkway.
Right. Are you putting in curbstone? I'm just curious.
We are not, we are not.
All right.
And he was not called the walkway to the river just yet, so by not having a sidewalk there, we felt it wasn't inviting.
They know probably, just curious, I hadn't seen the plan. That's all I had. I just want to make sure there was an overflow and we didn't run it over land. We actually put it in a pipe that is permitted, which is permitted to the Boston Water and Sewer, so that's fine. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Laney? Commissioner Laney, are you there or are you muted? I can't see you on the screen.
I think I had a little internet issue, but I'm back. Thanks for, to the proponent for incorporating the comments. Thinking particularly about the planting and revising that layout. I think the the drawings identifying the new chain link fabric may be worth adding that note that it's held, you know, eight inches above finished grade to allow for that wildlife movement. I think the signage, is that something that I assume will be submitted to Eleanor at some point, or do you have that signage design?
Which already.
Do you mean the language, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm curious what that, what that language is for the sign.
I think we probably submitted to the commission for review and approval and used something similar that you've improved in the past.
Okay, sounds good.
True. And basically, we took a generic sign and the verbiage that we added was to stay, stay out of the water until Conservation Commission approved. We figured that would scare people to not go near the water.
And then I think that chain link fence, that existing line, there may just be some trees that the layout is still sort of landing on it. I'm assuming those will all be in board of that fence. But yeah, I think that's all I have, so thank you again for those, making those changes.
Okay, great. Before I go to Commissioner Wilson, just want to remind members of the public, if you want to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, thank you. I think I was out of town when we did this first round, so I appreciate all my fellow commissioners and staff putting in lots and lots of comments and questions, and the proponents as well for addressing them. I don't have anything further. Hand it off.
Okay, Commissioner Conan?
Thank you. Did I hear that the impervious surface has increased?
Well, it's, it's the gross area based on the existing building and the way the existing paving went. We removed all of that. It's just the footprint of the building will be the impervious surface.
Which will then, if it's worthy of noting, which will then be infiltrated into the ground, so there'll be no runoff from the structure. Today presently, there is uncontrolled runoff from the roof leaders from the paved parking area. It's contributing to the detriment of the community, of the neighborhood, because there's no water quality. All of that is going to go away as part of this project.
And the existing pavement within the 25-foot riverfront area, and our impervious will not be within that area.
I see. So there'll be an improvement relative to the current condition, I get that. But there, but there will also be an increase in impervious surface, sounds like.
There's, there's a modest increase in impervious surface, but rather uniquely about this project is that, that, you know, I can't speak for what your concerns are. Obviously, there's always a concern with stormwater runoff from an increased impervious surface. Uniquely in this situation, we have an oversized infiltration system that hopefully will never overflow into the city's drainage system, and all that stormwater runoff will be maintained and infiltrated into the ground. And it's all clean runoff, worthy of noting as well, because it's all directed proof.
Great, yeah, thank you. And I was looking at the revisions made to the application. It looks like there was a set of revisions made on the 13th, and then another set of revisions on the 18th. Was there some reason to make a second set of revisions?
There's, there's no smoking gun of issues of why the changes. There were situations with edits and typos, and the and the commission staff was very patient with us. There was a number of oversights that commission staff had identified that we needed to clarify in our report. So there were a number of, there was more than that, I guess I will say, revisions and re-submissions because of some misunderstandings in the regulations and our need to be more clear and precise, and your agent was very accommodating in that regard.
Right, so nothing material in terms of content, sounds like more clarification.
It was.
Okay.
Building footprint has remained unchanged for months. The stormwater drainage system that I mentioned that was modified was, was, you know, I wanted to do an overflow in the rear, and we found that we did a better thing. So that's the only modifications have been, you know, clarifications, clarity, drainage, erosion control, nothing with the structure, nothing with anything fundamental that you should be made aware of.
Some errors, mistakes that I made in transferring them. The staff was able to point it out to us, we were able to correct it, and that was the last action that went in last Thursday.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, mistakes happen, I appreciate it. It's just easier to, while reading, if we know what the delta is, what I was looking for.
I hate it when I get a set of drawings from Buddy and he says, listen, this is the new update. What changed?
Exactly, yeah, thank you. Thanks, Chair Parker.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
Nothing new on this one. Thank you for the changes from the earlier dismissal.
Okay, great. Eleanor, I don't see any hands up to you.
I do not see any hands either, and we did not receive any comments beyond the ones that were voiced at the last hearing.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions with the special conditions that the OOC will be either incorporated into the master deed or placed in the management company's operating manual, whichever is the case. I think we talked about the fence, Eleanor, and I think you have that in there already. Signage regarding access to the river. Did I miss anything, Eleanor? Oh, and the environmental monitor.
The environmental monitor, as well as some sort of physical boundary marking the riverfront and an onsite meeting with commission staff after erosion controls are installed, but before work commences.
Okay, so the hiring of an environmental monitor, the physical barrier to the, to the river, and I'm sorry, what else did you say?
Apologies, yeah, it's the, and then a required onsite meeting with commission staff after erosion controls are installed and after physical boundary has been put up, but before any other work commences.
Okay, okay, so a meeting with commission staff after the erosion controls are in place prior to any subsequent work.
Correct, thank you.
So that's the motion.
Good, so moved?
We have a second. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
And Chair Parker, for the record, Didi Hernandez with the Environment Department has joined us staff, and we're just going to do a quick swap with who is screen sharing, so thank you for your patience.
Okay, I'll just call this, while we're doing that. Next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number 0062050 and Boston File Number 2025-022 from Goddard Consulting LLC, LLC on behalf of the AD Group Company for the proposed construction of an apartment building, access drive parking lot, and the installation of associated utility lines and stormwater management system at 24 Stimson Street in West Roxbury. Resource areas are 100-foot buffer to IVW and isolated land subject to flooding. Continued from the August 6th, 2025 hearing, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Tom Shuts from Goddard Consulting is here on behalf of the applicant.
Great, okay. So you had some homework to do. Spent some revisions, so why don't we, why don't we go over those? First thing I have here is tree, tree removal plan and a number of trees that are being taken down. Did we get that info?
Yep, it's actually in a small slideshow, which we'll present, and our landscape architect will note that quickly. We'll keep it brief, just kind of noting some of the comments and questions that the commission had at the last hearing. One note is that this was actually withdrawn from DEP because it's just within jurisdiction of the local Conservation Commission, and there's no actual impacts to DEP jurisdictional resource areas, so that's just one note for this one as well. That was done previous to the hearing tonight. So the, the file number no longer applies in this case, but anyway, this is 24 Stimson Street. Just moving on to the next slide, keeping it fast. Next slide, please, okay. Here's our brief agenda. We're going to touch on invasive species management. That was one of the comments from Commissioner Laney last time. Going to take a look at the snow storage and architectural plan, tree removal plan, landscaping, adjustments, retaining well detail, which is another request from the commission, and then just some minor updates to the civil set. And we'll follow up with any questions or comments from the commission after this. Next slide. So onsite, there are some invasive species for sure. The predominant, most of the, the trees in fact are invasive Norway maples onsite, but we also do have some invasive shrubs, including Japanese knotweed, multi-floral rose, burning bush, barberry, and then again Norway maple, some of them quite large in fact. We're going to be doing management, including hand cutting and pulling, and then also a cut stump treatment or a cut dab treatment with herbicide application consisting of a glycophate. This, when the invasive species management is completed, all of them will be removed from site, preventing any spread to adjacent properties. This is a very similar program to what was previously approved by the CONCOM at the Canterbury Street adjacent to the riverfront area. In this case, it's going to be within 25 feet from the IVW. The main concern is obviously the Japanese knotweed, which is incredibly difficult to actually eradicate. That will be strictly through a cut stump treatment. All the stems will be cut and dabbed with a glycophate treatment. In the other cases of the Norway maple and shrubs, the, all of those will be handled with either a hand pulling during the spring months when the ground is softer, so they can be removed and all the roots removed, preventing any growing back. Or they're going to be, some of the larger specimens will be cut low and the stem also dabbed with that glycophate treatment to prevent any kind of regrowth throughout the rest of the months. This will, we'll also be doing a monitoring program, which will be sent to the Conservation Commission after the invasive management is completed, and any herbicide application will be done through a license applicator, not just some contractor hired off the street. So if there's any questions on that, we'll touch on those in the end, but I think we can move on. All right, let Andreas handle this one.
Yeah, so this, this is, this slide is supposed to illustrate our areas of snow storage and also, you know, the trash room, as that came up, you know, butters had questions for that last hearing. We have now, you know, proposed a total of 1,327 square feet combined for snow storage spaces. The driveway and parking area is 9,000, sorry, 6,908 square feet. So that is a ratio of close to 20%. And then, let's say if the commission feels like the snow storage, you know, closer to the 25-foot buffer zone there is too close. If we subtract that, we are still at, you know, roughly 14%, you know, as to the whole driveway and parking area. This is also supposed to illustrate, you know, where the trash room is, where it opens to, so that it can show that, you know, a vehicle can pull in, remove the trash and, and pull back out. Next slide, please. Now I hand it off to Michael from Berdans.
Thanks, Andreas. This page here represents our tree mitigation and removal plan, showing the trees within the 100-foot boundary. Of all the trees surveyed, about 38 trees, only two were significant native trees, the rest being Norway maples. So we're proposing a removal of 30 trees, and just two of those are significant native trees, the red oaks. And we're planning to mitigate these removals with mostly native plantings, which we'll get to on our planting plan. Next slide, please. Our main change to our landscape plan since our previous submission was based on your feedback. We got rid of the snow storage area up to the top right of the plan. We felt that it was tight there, and so we got rid of that. We replaced it with native plantings. You could see the four green plants up there with the under plantings below. Um, you could see the four green plants up there with the under plantings below. Um, the reason we don't have any large trees there, we wanted to know is because there's a sewer easement there, or a utility easement, and since we're not allowed to plant trees there, we decided to do what we could. And so we're making the most out of the space that we have. And this also acts as a buffer between the neighbor's property. We also had feedback to um raise up the fence eight inches for habitat bridging, and so we're moving forward with that. Um, next slide, please. This slides are planting plan, which is highlighting our native plants. Um, nothing much changed here, except that area at the top right I mentioned earlier, in which we're planting service berries and inkberries, both native species. Next slide, please. Here we're showing our, um, this is pretty much the same as what we had shown you last time. Uh, again, just highlighting the fact that we're leaving eight inches up on the black metal fence for habitat bridging and the fact that we're replanting with native species within the vegetated wetland, which is basically all native plants at the moment. Thank you. I'll pass it back on to someone else on team.
Think that'll probably be me if you could flip to the next slide, please. Oh, that's for top.
Yeah, this is just um a quick note that we actually decided on which avian window treatment we'd be going with to prevent bird collisions into windows. We'd be going with these stickers, which are used throughout New England to prevent uh collisions. And it can be one of the special conditions that these would be applied to any outward facing windows. Next slide.
All right, so um, this is uh, this, the slide is supposed to illustrate that um, we have moved the retaining wall further away from the twenty five foot buffer. Uh, we moved it away uh by two feet. Um, that should alleviate any concern of, you know, that the footings might go into the buffer zone or or not even the footings of the wall, but also, you know, uh, any kind of offset that needs to be dug in order to install the footings. Um, next slide, please. And this is, as promised, a footing detail from the structural engineer. Um, so on the right side here, you see the higher grade, which is our parking area. On the left side, you see the lower grade, which is uh the area closer to the twenty five foot zone. You you can see that we only need to go out by one foot. Um, and therefore, you know, uh, an offset by one and a half feet to two feet is more than enough to install that footing and not disturb the twenty five foot zone. It's with uh uh out of 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 that zone. Um, I believe um, um Commissioner Laney brought up that concern and wanted to see the footing detail. Um, also, um, I I forgot to mention at the last slide, um, if there are any concerns with maneuverability or functionality of the parking space uh lot and the uh driveway, uh, we brought on our trafficking engineer, um, who we, you know, redesigned this area with and um who determined that we can move the wall uh in toward our building by another two feet to expand that buffer. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, now I hand it off to uh Kevin Quetti, our civil engineer.
Hi, everyone. It's Kevin Quetti from Boston Civil. Um, so here is the existing site. Um, as you can see, we um, it's an empty lot that we modeled as um woods in fair condition, um, with a longer time of concentration due to the um gradual slope um through the property. Um, and I believe um Commissioner Sullivan had brought up um previously um, or a question whether or not the existing property was designed as a swale from the street. Um, but if you look closer at the contours, um, especially into the package we had, we have resubmitted to the Boston Water and Sewer Commission, um, is that the um existing street runoff did go to the catch basin, um, which we're proposing inlet protection there. Um, so if you go to the next slide, um, you can see that, um, you know, we have the stormwater design at the back, um, which consists of thirty six retained chambers. Um, and we had actually noticed some um, some progress. Um, updates hadn't been incorporated in door impervious area table. Um, there, as um Andreas had said, we did um push the wall back about two feet, um, but the previous round of updates hadn't factored in the complete limits of the building overhang. Um, add new retaining wall along the west side and then um a landscaping slit strip that was previously in the scope before the um, the the turnaround area, um, updates, especially below the overhang. So um, we had resubmitted updated calculations, which still do show that um that does manage the hundred year storm event. Um, and as we mentioned previously, there isn't outlet control structure um for an emergency type scenario, um, just to avoid any um overflow from the wall. Um, but it is, um, it has been updated to reflect that on our plan. Um, and as mentioned, the stormwater design still does manage that a hundred year storm event. Um, but and then other other items about the stormwater design, um, there is a retaining wall along the west side of the property, um, with a gravel strip, um, which is pitched to two percent down to the system. Um, and additionally, um, we had previously shown four foot uh catch, four foot some catch basins um with hoods as outlets, um, but we revised that to be water quality inlets uh to improve um the water quality benefits for this mitigation. Um, and it was brought up as a question um previously about whether or not we had explored permeable pavers or porous asphalt in that back area. Um, but based on the United uh University of New Hampshire's regulations uh for the required um section thickness for the water quality benefits to meet TSS requirements, um, that just didn't, we didn't have enough of a section there to provide that above those concrete chambers. So um, we thought that the um water quality inlets was the best way um to manage that water below the driveway area. Thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you.
All right, I think we can probably skip down to, yep, keep going. Next slide, next slide. These are just additional details if needed. If there's questions that come up, next slide. So I I think that'll sum up our discussion tonight. If there's any additional questions for anybody on the team, we'd be happy to field them now from the commission.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, I have a few few questions here. Um, one about the snow removal area. Thank you for your um, thank you for your work on that. Um, am I remembering that, um, and I think this is a question for you, Andreas, uh, that uh you would be um, uh, having a snow removal plan whereby if you got six inches, uh, the snow would be removed from the site?
That is right. Sorry for not mentioning that. Um, so yeah, I uh, we actually incorporated in the uh homeowners association budget, basically the operating budget of this building, um, that we can haul off snow uh when it's over six inches uh a- as as a measure. Um, you know, um, we did a, I did a calculation basically um of how much volume that is, and um that is about, um. We can have ten uh twenty cubic yard trucks uh which uh off the top of my, on my memory, it's about uh over fifteen thousand cubic feet of uh of of snow uh that can be removed um o- on 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 that budget alone. Um, so you know, um, judging sort of from the snowfall that we've seen and snow budgets that we have for, you know, a similar sized site. Um, this is, you know, uh, more than adequate um from from a budget ster- uh budgetary standpoint. Um, uh, in this site, um, we actually have, uh, let me pull that up, sorry. We have um annually seven thousand two hundred uh dollars budgeted uh for snow removal um on a a larger site with a larger parking lot in West Roxbury. Uh, we spent four thousand two hundred dollars um uh for plowing, um, actually less than that, uh, a little north of forty one hundred dollars for plowing uh last snow season. Um, and uh for this one, we've increased the budget almost by double to account for the uh snow removal and more severe snowstorms.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so for the turnaround area, um, sometimes uh vehicles overshoot. Uh, uh, what about placing some bollards uh to make sure that there's no um encroachment beyond the uh turnaround area?
Oh, absolutely. Um, we we will place bollards there, uh, and also bollards at the end of the parking spaces that uh face the retaining wall.
Great. Okay, so uh nice segue in the parking. Uh, and we talked about this a little bit uh at the last hearing. Um, am I right that there's twenty one spaces there and like five guest spaces?
That is correct. Um, you know, usually the units get one space deeded, but we have a few larger units uh where we are going to uh deet two spaces. That leaves five spaces for guest parking. And in a snow emergency situation, we can use those as snow storage as well.
Okay, so um a- as we've talked about, that parking in back there is pretty tight to the resource area. Um, how many units um was this approved for? Or proposed? Fourteen. So you've got one and a half spaces, five for guests, right? Is that?
That is correct. Yep.
Yeah, um. Yeah, it's pretty tight back there. Um, it feels like if we could get rid of the guest spaces, um, and I know you'd like to have guest spaces, um, and probably get some of that parking away from the resource area.
That would. Oh, sorry to interrupt. That that would actually send us to zoning because now it's it's not as of right anymore.
Cause the calculation is one point five.
One and a half per dwelling. Yep.
Yeah. Wow, that's generous.
That's West Roxbury.
Yeah, you know, and it's it's um a situation where the, you know, the, I guess, maybe outdated need for parking is um, you know, it is coming into direct conflict with, you know, what we'd like to see as far as having more green area closer to these resource areas as opposed to parking.
Yeah, I I couldn't agree more, Commissioner, and you know, and and all the, you know, the the Article eighty projects that go through that and and zoning relief there, the BTPDA is actually pairing back parking a lot, you know, um, kind of pushing back on the outdated zoning code. Um, you know, so um, I mean, i- if 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 we could get a reduced parking area uh wi- without, you know, triggering zoning violations, we we would have definitely done that because I do think one and a half parking spaces per dwelling is excessive.
And I would imagine, once you put in twenty one spaces and let's say, uh, the zoning code gets changed uh and to be compliant, you need only one space, it would be difficult at that point to eliminate seven spaces because they've probably already been sold. These are gonna be condominium units?
That's correct. These will be condominium units, yeah.
Okay, it's an issue. So you have bollards back there. Um, and I can't remember, do we have a, do we have a strip of vegetate? What do we have uh between the parking spaces in the resource area?
That strip is actually untouched. There is, you know, a small buffer between the um the the lot line and the retaining wall. Um, you know, if the commission wants to uh propose something, we we should do there. We're happy to do it. But it's very small. It's maybe two or three feet.
Okay, well, anything's better than nothing. I'll let um Commissioners Laney and Wilson um talk about that. Um. Uh, good work on the um window stickers, and I would um be asking for a special condition that the order conditions uh be uh incorporated with the master deed. But I think we've already discussed that. Okay, uh, Elena, what do you have?
Thank you. Yes, um, I, one of my questions was about the the guest parking, so it's it's helpful to know that that is part of the one and a half unit or one and a half um parking spaces per unit. Um, I think that the sort of outstanding question that I have, that I I think at this point has maybe been addressed to the best of the sites and this project's capabilities is just about the the snow storage. Um, but I think if if snow is being moved offsite, if there are bollards at the end to prevent any larger vehicles from ending up in the wetland, um, I think that, you know, those are the mitigation strategies that that I would have recommended. Um, yeah, Chair Parker, I don't think I have anything further on this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan? Commissioner Sullivan?
You look frozen.
Okay, let's go to Commissioner Laney.
Thanks for um the retaining wall detail and um making that shift of the wall away from the buffer. I appreciate that. Um. I think going to Chair Parker's question about those parking spaces um proximity. Can you remind me the drainage, the the grading is um draining away from that wall at that point? Is that right?
Yes, that's right. Um, Kevin can confirm that as well.
Yeah, we have um, we have a low point at uh the center of those back spaces. Um, and we did push it a little bit farther off the wall, the low point. Um, and then the rest of it is um just at the edge of the easement at the corner of the um, the loading space um where we have our other water quality inlet. But yes, everything is meant to be pitched away from the wall um to those low points, those two low points.
And then the the condition, I, is it, can we go back to one of the site plans? So that, so the area, I guess, to the left where the parking spaces are, um, I think we're not able to see sort of what that condition is outside of the property line, but you're saying that that is remaining vegetated?
Yeah, yeah. So I believe we showed a foot off the property line in that area um between the face of the wall. Um, and then, yeah, that would, I assume, just be replanted or with um, you know, native, any kind of native materials.
Although that's, that's not in the property itself, right? That's.
Am I correct? Yeah, it would, it would, it would remain on the the property line would be untouched.
But there may be, if there's disturbance there, an agreement to, you're saying to seed that or? Yeah, cause some, I mean, it'll be touched to some extent, right, to get that wall in there.
Yeah, we can definitely seed that section, you know, it's it's a thin sliver. Um, you know, um, I'm I'm not sure who owns the land beyond that, you know, but um we can definitely seed that section.
Okay, cause yeah, I mean, I think it's, if you're building that wall a foot from the property line, it's probably inevitable that there's disturbance on their property, right? Um. So maybe that's something that's an agreement, but I, you know, sort of beside the point, but I think that that makes sense, um, that there's lumen seed re- replanting that area. Um, so I mean, I think, I guess generally that sounds adequate to me.
Anything else?
I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, sure. Uh, before we uh go on, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Um, Commissioner Sullivan, are you back?
I'm back. Imagine that. Listen, I had a question on those birds in the window. Is that a permanent condition that goes with the property, so they're forever looking at birds?
I I believe so, yes. Uh, because, you know, the building is there, uh, and uh in order for birds not to fly into the windows, we had the choice of a few window treatments. It's either dots, birds, or stripes. Uh, stripes to me as a builder kind of look like uh, construction hasn't been completed, right? Uh, that's what we do, you know, when we have glazing and we put new glazing up and for safety. So uh, we we went with the uh, the birds uh for a more uh finished look, uh, and uh uh, I also saw a lot of the And I also saw a lot of those as a kid. I'm I'm half Swiss and and they they have those those kind of bird stickers in in buildings and so it's.
I'm just curious. If you went with stripes, it'd look like you're in jail, so I wasn't sure. Did someone report that the they looked at the 30-inch drain line and found it full of dirt? Did someone send a report into the commission on that? I thought I had heard that a while ago.
Yeah, so we do need to jet that line to get clear camera footage for you guys.
Yeah.
And and so question, the question was, you know, should we jet it? Are you going to jet it? Because it's not really, you know, when when we have a a house drain and we own the property, it's clear to us, okay, we should jet it. So we weren't clear on whose responsibility is to jet that line to get clear footage.
Well, clearly, it's owned by the commission and they should jet it, but it depends how quickly they can get it compared to when you want to start working.
Okay.
So we'll we'll take a look at that. And were you guys putting in curb at the upper Stimson Street? I recall one of these things was putting a new curbstone for a portion of your property, and then it was going to die out. Is that you?
Yeah, so we did design it with that. If it doesn't end up getting installed, the elevation still work for getting safely to the street. It was just, that was what was a logical way to, at this point of this project, to, you know, reflect that. And there does seem to be ways where, you know, like there was intended to be an accessible route at some point down that road. So we just designed it with the current standards in Boston and could obviously revise that as needed outside of the property lines, you know, as we go through the project.
Right, so at the end of the day, we just don't want runoff from the street down onto your property is what I'm concerned with. That, you know, you grade whatever you do out in the city street, what they allow you to do, grade whatever is out there to get their basin up in the street, not run down your property and cause your problems later.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, and and we'll we'll address this idea of the the cleaning of the line, because we've got to get that all done and TV before, and I didn't know if they had that as a condition on you guys as part of the plan review.
No, we we were reaching out to the Boston Water and Sewer Commission to get clarity on who's responsible for jetting the line.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Yep, all right, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I appreciate Commissioner Sullivan's dog sending in that report there.
Look at this guy, he this guy won't quit. I don't know what's up.
Yeah, he won't miss it. Yeah, won't miss a thing, right?
That's snacks in your pocket.
No, yeah, appreciate you guys sending in the revised details, that type of thing. I think it's an ambitious planning plan, which is what we want to see. I'm hoping it's successful. I guess to that point, you know, you have a fair bit of like permeable type pavers and other sorts of surfaces like that. In in terms of like us giving you the COC at the end of this, like, what sort of level of performance are you expecting to see or, you know, the guarantee from the nursery installers and that sort of thing? Just to make sure that sort of like what what we see on this plan here is what we're getting at the end of the process.
Yep. So Commissioner Wilson, and Eleanor, help me out on this. As far as the condition to monitor the success of the plantings, what, do we have a standard condition in there? Is this a two-year, three-year monitoring process?
We can make sure that we have the standard language in there, but it's typically three years.
Three years. Does that make sense, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, that's good, as long as it's a little better than the usual too, so.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
So given that topic of the proximity of the parking to the resource area, and Chair Parker's request to move the parking, and your response that it's not possible to do without going in for variance. Is there a way to reduce the parking? What would be the way to reduce it?
Zoning variance, because the the minimum required parking as of right in West Roxbury is one and a half spa, parking spots per dwelling. That is why.
So I I got that. I I get that part. If you if the number of units is reduced, you can then reduce the parking, correct?
Correct, correct, but then, you know, the project becomes financially unfeasible.
I see. So it's just feasible now due to the current number of units?
Yeah, we pared it down, you know, on the previous hearing, we had Eric Zacherson, the architect. Before we took over this project, you know, they went, I think they initially proposed over 20 units. And after several revisions, pared it down to 14 units. At that point, it still made sense, so we moved forward, you know.
Okay. Is there, I may have brought this up last time too, is there a way to avoid leaks, oil and gasoline and all that, from the cars to, by maybe providing electric charging there?
Yeah, so we are, the current energy codes dictates that this building is EV charger ready. So so the all the the switchgear, the the load that we will bring into this all-electric building will be EV ready. So if we if we think that, okay, we're we're going to get a demographic with EV chargers, certainly, you know, we can install the EV chargers. Either way, it'll be EV charger ready, so that is already in the scope of work. And then also, I believe that we have an oil and gas separator in the civil design that is on the Boston Water and Sewer Plan.
Appreciate that. In terms of the demographics wanting EV and whatnot, I think that's kind of cultural shift only happens as in more and more facilities are created for people, and then it'll attract the right demographics. Or even if somebody's not considering that, then it becomes possible to consider that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's. Go ahead.
I I can see us doing some in the in the carport so that they're covered, you know.
Okay, well, just one last quick question. I I saw some trash in the site visits. Do you have any idea as to what brought it? Is it, I mean, you always find trash in places, but is it from flooding, from wind? Where is it coming from? Do you have any ideas?
Actually, you know, when I talked to the neighboring condo association, it was brought to my attention that, you know, some teenagers or whoever kind of goes there sometimes, because you can see right at the entrance, you have like a pile of nips. And then, you know, when you go further into the lot, you kind of have this little makeshift teepee, you know, where someone was hanging out and you have a lot of beer cans laying out. So I I I do see how, you know, maybe some teen, local teenagers go there and 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 do that. So obviously, you know, with this site being developed, all that will stop.
Great, thank you. That's all, Chair Parker.
Thank you. Commissioner Estes Marjazi.
But remind me on the the sort of the southern perimeter and the western perimeter of the parking area, that's that's all have the the metal fencing around there? So you're having done some of this, you know, the the no matter how, no matter how much your spec says, if you don't have a barrier there, the snowplow is going to push the snow over the edge. If you have a fancy fence that they'll have to pay to repair, they're less likely to do that.
That's right. Bollards and and nice fences is we're using as a as a deterrent there.
The encouragement to proper management. Okay, so the commissioners have really answered most of the questions we I had from the last go around, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see a comment here in the chat from Jake. Now there's two comments, so I have to scroll back up here. Okay, Jake is asking, any significant storm results in flooding at what would be the entrance to this address? The drain is routinely clean but still floods in heavy rainstorms. Is that being addressed?
I think that's a good question for Kevin.
Yeah, so that may be tied into the the investigation that was done about the drain line. You know, we will be doing some inlet protection to make sure that sediment during construction doesn't get into that line. And in terms of actual, the capacity of the catch basin to handle the current street runoff, that hasn't been studied, but, you know, obviously, that'll be something that'll be closely looked at. You know, along with maintaining that drain main throughout the project. So, you know, in terms of clearing that out, I think that's kind of one of the first things that we're actually needing for that Boston Water and Sewer Approval. Just to also make sure that the line isn't damaged before and after the project.
Okay, great, thank you. Jake also makes a comment that the property next to the abutting property, Strip Mall in Washington, has a parking lot behind it now that has tractor-trailer parking rental spaces. Would your development affect the drainage of gas and oil from that property into wetlands resource areas?
No, not that we're aware of.
I'm not sure about that property. Is it the one they're referring to directly to the west?
It's a strip mall. Jake, did you want to unmute and ask your question? Or clarify your comment?
Because if it's the property behind that, then we, it doesn't seem to be that we are affecting any of those contours from their property.
Okay.
Okay, you say that, but there is, can you hear me?
Yeah.
There is significant tractor-trailer parking right next to this. That's relatively new. It's only been a couple of years they've been renting out that lot. And I'm just wondering if this has any effect, if it is pretty much right next door.
So we are proposing a swell on that property where we provide, like based at the midpoint of the building, providing a swell with 2% minimum pitch to the street, which would make its way to the catch basin. And then at the rear, we were providing a swell also with a 2% minimum slope to the south. You know, in terms of their runoff coming off their property and park asphalt, I'm not sure. Like, how well that catch basin has been functioning on their property. But we we would be proposing that swell on either end of of the property line.
Yeah, and Jake, I would say that to your concern, staff has to visit this. Eleanor, correct me if I'm wrong, but you'd be visiting the property before construction at some point. Maybe you could take a look at this parking lot if there's indeed leaking gas and oil?
Yes, happy to do that. And Jake, I just wanted to clarify. So do you mean that there's currently drainage from the strip mall of gas and oil actively going into the wetlands?
I don't know, but there is now consistently a lot of big trucks parked back there.
Okay.
Didn't used to be the case, but I'd say in the last couple of years, there are now always several tractor-trailers parked right next to this to 24 Stimson.
That is, you're talking about the Knights of Columbus.
No, but behind them, yeah, behind the Knights of Columbus.
Yeah.
That little strip mall next to the Knights. I believe they rent out their back parking lot for tractor-trailer parking. It's a butts right to the, but right next to you guys and to the wetlands right there.
Yeah, yeah. Elena, I actually have photographs of that lot that I can share with you.
That would be great. I was about to say, so if it's, yeah, if it's not related to 24 Stimson directly, of course, it's, you know, an abutting property. But Andreas and Jake, if either of you have photos that you're willing to email to cc@Boston.gov, that would be helpful and I can follow up with the with the property owner and and see if we can address any, you know, storage of materials that's not being done appropriately near the wetland.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Eleanor, I don't see any other hands, any other comments?
I don't see anything either.
Okay, so that I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order conditions. And Eleanor, feel feel free to help me out with the special conditions here. But special conditions would include the avian stickers on the windows, bollards in the areas that we talked about, so that would be the turnaround area, the parking spaces. Snow removal would also include that storms of six inches or more that the snow would actually be physically removed from the property. We want to have the maintenance, vegetation maintenance plan monitoring for three years. And master deed, the order of conditions, Andreas, would be incorporated into the master deeds so that future owners, long after you're gone, will know what their obligations are.
Yeah.
Did I miss anything, Eleanor?
No, I think that was everything.
Okay, so that's the motion on the floor?
So moved.
Give a second.
Okay. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lanay.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Condon.
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Marjazi.
Aye.
And I vote, I carry six, nothing.
Does the motion also, does the motion also include close the hearing?
Yes, it did. I said, close the hearing and issue. But thank you, I appreciate that. And don't wait till next year to correct me either.
I'm giving you a chance, that's all.
I know, I know, thank you.
I'm working with you, yeah.
Okay, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, notice of intent for DP file number 0062056 from FOTH on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed demolition of a deteriorated seawall and its replacement with a sloped stone revetment at Pierce Park 2, 95 Marginal Street, East Boston. Resource areas are land under ocean, coastal bank, fish runs, land subject to coastal storm flowage, rocky intertidal shore, 100-foot buffer to rocky intertidal shore, and 100-foot buffer to coastal bank. Who's here on behalf of Massport?
Yes, thanks Chair Parker and Commissioners Chris Bush, Senior Environmental Planner with Massport here this evening with Fiona Vardy of FOTH, as well as Mark Mangiello of LEC Environmental.
Okay, and Chris, remind me, if I'm wrong here, but I think the outstanding issue was the characterization of the resource area regarding the rocky intertidal shore. And you have changed your NOI to reflect that. So if you want to go through any of the high points, I think the performance standards for the area identified prior to this and the title shore are pretty similar, but if you want to go over that, that would be helpful.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, just following and to summarize, on the July 9th hearing, we did schedule a meeting with DMFCZM and Division of Marine Fisheries that occurred on July 22nd. Eleanor was present as well, just to review their assessment of the resource areas present, as you may recall. With the original notice of intent, we had included coastal bank, land under ocean, fish run, and land subject to coastal storm flowage. There was some fill material off of the existing seawall. Again, this is an area which is is really all filled. The original shoreline is backed by Marginal Street. Those resource agencies were of the opinion that that fill material was really functioning and had the sort of functional values of rocky intertidal. So we, through this meeting, you know, deferred to the state agencies and their assessment of the resource areas and determined that we would include that and the the buffer zone to rocky intertidal as part of the filing. So subsequent to that meeting, we provided updated notice of intent, narrative description, updated Form 3, and and plans. It's my understanding, and I think Eleanor had received these emails as well from those those resource agencies, that they were fine with with the updated material and what we had represented on the plan of record. And that there was no change necessary with with any of the the design aspects of the the project plans. So with regard to rocky intertidal, this project is a water-dependent project, so the performance standards under the regs are that we utilize best best practices as part of the project. And in fact, with the new stone revetment, will actually be increasing the level and scale of of rocky intertidal habitat with that. So I've got, again, Fiona and Mark present as well. um, I've got, you know, again Fiona and uh, Mark present as well. Um, uh, Mark, I think it, it completed a fair amount of the, the material, uh, could discuss, I think, some of the specifics uh, with respect to the performance standards.
Uh, Mark, are you on?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, yes.
Yeah, so, so my role is more focused on um, the actual classification of the resource area and not the performance standards. I think Fiona can speak to that um, more directly. If there's any questions about that.
Okay, Fiona, did you want to run through it quickly or just wait for questions?
Sure, I can go through the performance standards. Um, and as Chris mentioned, we discussed this with the agencies. Um, and although the uh, the artificial fill does not meet the regulatory definition of naturally, naturally occurring rocky intertidal. Um, the sloped stone revetment is anticipated to improve the ecological functions of the site. Um, including habitat, uh, and will provide more area for the site for um, things like macroalgae, for instance. Um, and will not uh, negatively impair um, wave energy dissipation, sediment transport, um, other uh, functions that rocky intertidal supports. Um, and uh, we will also be going through uh, um, you know, species review with uh, the Army Corps. Um, and we have confirmed with DEPCZM and DMF um, that it meets the performance standards for rocky intertidal.
Okay, good, thank you. So as far as the uh, consultation with the Army Corps, is that a specific permit? Um, or is it a consultation with them?
It's part of the Army Corps review.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, was that it, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, I think that was the only outstanding matter. Um, based upon, I re-reviewed the uh, the hearing uh, earlier today and um, I think that, that was the only direction we received from the commission. Uh, at the end of the, the July, July ninth hearing was that we resolved that outstanding matter that was represented in uh, those, those agencies' comments on the NOI as well as the uh, MEPA uh, environmental notification form.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And I did see that we got uh, three emails from uh, DEP, DMF and CZM. Um, saying that they were um, satisfied with the uh, changes to the NOI. Uh, Eleanor, uh, what do you have on this?
I didn't have anything to add, just confirming that we did in fact receive those emails. And uh, I, I believe based on our notes as well, that that was the only outstanding item from the last hearing.
Okay, great. Um, Commissioner Sullivan, do you have the fire going there? I just saw the temperature. We are down in the mid fifties here. This, this is unbelievable. Um, but it's your turn to talk and I hope you're warm.
Lucky me. Yeah, yeah, I'm warm. I got a dog laying all over me. Um, the confirmed that we didn't have any outfalls along this section and we didn't have any overland flow. I thought I had asked you that last time.
Yeah, there's no, no outfalls that I'm aware of out there. Fiona, do you recall the design plan there? Um,
Um, we confirmed there are no, there are none within the site, the site plan.
Right, and there was no overland flow, correct, off the area or was there?
No, I mean, it's just a, a margin of harbor walk that's being constructed there. Most of the, the land side work of the park was completed back in twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Um, so this is an area that was actually anticipated uh, as use uh, for construction access for the Pierce Park three buildout uh, with that project uh, on hold and without any type of uh, definitive schedule or timeline with that we're proceeding with this project to, to complete the harbor walk and uh, that shoreline stabilization.
Alright, alright, I'll just double check them. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Laney?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I'm here, thanks.
Okay, and just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat, the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker. I'm just trying to understand what this redelineation is about. Couldn't you explain to me? I mean, it, it, um, it's not very clear to me.
Yeah, the um, the uh, area in question and, and again, going way back, the uh, the commission had actually issued a order of resource area delineation back in twenty twenty-three. Um, that delineation was associated with the Pierce Park three project. Um, that delineation only outlined uh, land under ocean coastal bank and uh, land subject coastal storm. Flowage um, as part of the MEPA process, uh, you know, we had included those resource areas based upon the delineation. Um, in meeting with resource agencies last May. Um, they had asked that we re-review the, the resources on the project site. Um, and that's where Mark and LEC came in and conducted a reanalysis of the resource areas on site. Um, you know, there is a margin of, of rubble off of the seawall. Um, that is not naturally occurring. Uh, the formal definition of rocky intertidal under the uh, wetland regs uh, require that rocky intertidal be naturally occurring, the natural ledge, natural boulders. Uh, that not being the case, uh, Mark and his, his assessment and definition did not include rocky intertidal. Um, through the MEPA process and the NOI that was filed, the resource agencies again um, uh, indicated that they felt that this was in fact rocky intertidal. Um, and then we clarified with that meeting with them on July twenty-second that, you know, they were really relying upon what they felt were the functions and values of that area, not necessarily the strict definition under the Wetlands Protection Act regs. Um, those, those being specialists, uh, you know, at the state level, we, we deferred to their opinion. Um, and redelineated um, that area of fill between uh, the low and high water marks as rocky intertidal. Um, so that's, that's where we landed.
I see. Thank you. And so what, what does, what does this have to do with urban spaces? What, what complicates it? What about being urban complicates this?
Um, about, or well, this is a, an area of, of historic fill, so a, as you know. Uh, Commissioner Condon, the uh, East Boston was, was mostly a collection of islands. The, the original shoreline here goes back towards, towards marginal streets. So this is an area largely of, of urban fill and warfing out. Um, in the eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, um, to, to sort of establish this margin of, of shoreline. So much all of the material, um, you know, that's present was, was constructed by, you know, humans over time.
Mm-hmm. So it's not exactly rocky intertidal, it's more like urban landfill intertidal.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is historic. I mean, you find this throughout, you know, the harbor that you've got areas of, of fill and rubble. Um, just along uh, the shoreline, sort of shoals along seawalls and uh, um, uh, you know, throughout bulkheads throughout the harbor. So um, you know, it's just a matter of, of how these, these uh, resource areas, um, you know, follow the definition, but then again, we can have sort of functions that uh, you know, adhere to um, sort of habitat and, you know, mitigation of other, um, you know, uh, shoreline waterfront dynamics that, that do meet and fall within the realms of the definition. So I think it was just a point of clarification that we had to get to with, with those resource agencies.
You see, thank you for that explanation, Chris. So what, what is, what is the impact of this redelineation?
Um, well, with rocky intertidal, um, as, as Fiona had, had noted, um, you know, there with a project that is water dependent in nature, as with other resource areas. Um, the standard is, you know, you utilizing best practical measures uh, for mitigation. Um, so uh, in large part, we are replacing, um, you know, a, a dump fill material with a place fill material. Um, you know, early in the conversations, I think we had last May with DMF, you know, they're the opinion that you're just replacing rock with rock and you're gonna end up with rock weed and that microphytic algae, uh, that, you know, setting up, you know, on this, this material uh, in no time. And in fact, if, if you look around Pierce Park one, you have a, a similar treatment um, as, as sort of seawall and revetment around Pierce Park one, and it's just covered with, with rock weed and, and that, that type of habitat material. So I think it's anticipated that this will uh, repopulate very, very quickly with that, that type of uh, uh, sea vegetation and organics.
I see. And any special consideration to the flooding that's likely to happen in the next say, couple of decades?
Yeah, well, the, the strategy has been, and I, uh, I think, you know, may have mentioned this at the last hearing, we've been working with the city on the sort of district scale flood protection measures uh, for this area. So um, with the construction of Pierce Park two, particularly the land side area that, that was elevated up to the, the designed flood elevation for twenty seventy. Um, and we're currently working with um, uh, the climate ready team, um, in the environment department as well as um, the, the coastal resilience infrastructure team and the planning department uh, to advance uh, the hazard mitigation grant uh, for this area, which would also integrate um, elevated structures along um, uh, East Pier Drive and Pierce Park Lane right in this area to connect in with that higher elevation uh, found on the, the park site. So there is an, an early flood pathway through this area and so uh, we're, we're really working to um, you know, get those elevated measures in place and support the city with this grant program uh, to close these pathways. And, and again, the, the park is, is part of that strategy.
Great. Last question, is the, is this strategy in line with all the strategies that were made while Pierce Park three was being planned?
Um, yeah, Pierce Park three, I think was a bit of a different uh, element. I, I know the Pierce Park one site is elevated as well to a, to a height that is um, uh, performative to prevent flooding by twenty seventy. Pierce Park three is C word of that, and I think most of the resilience measures that were anticipated with Pierce Park three is that that be a floodable and resilient project, but not necessarily part of a protective district scale barrier to protect this area of East Boston.
Whereas this one is.
Yeah, so this one again connects in with the elevation of Pierce Park one, which is at, at that higher elevation. And then working to the west, uh, the, we're anticipating connecting in with uh, elevated waterfront structures that are, you know, yet to be designed, which is uh, really the, the task of uh, the city right now. Um, you know, working with those grant fundings to design those measures, I think by next May or June, uh, to report back to, to FEMA.
Great, thank you, Chris. That's all, Chair Parker.
Thank you. Commissioner SS Marjazi?
Uh, nothing further on this one.
Thank you. Okay, Eleanor, uh, I don't see any hands up. Do you?
I don't see anything either, nothing in the inbox.
Any emails? Okay, so that I entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue uh, the order of conditions. Give a second. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner SS Marjazi?
Aye.
Uh, and I vote I, that carries six nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six twenty sixty-six and Boston file number twenty twenty-five dash zero three one from Arcadis US Inc. On behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the proposed repair of existing concrete sidewalk panels on the Lieutenant John J. McCorkle fishing pier uh, on Castle Island, twenty-ten William, J. Day Boulevard, South Boston. Resource areas coastal bank, land subject to coastal storm flowage, one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank, one hundred foot buffer to rocky intertidal shore. Um, and one hundred, one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank and twenty-five foot waterfront area. Who's representing the proponent?
Uh, good evening, Commission. This is Stephen Perry with Arcadis. Uh, with me this evening is Doug Partridge, Arcadis uh, environmental permitting specialist. And I believe uh, Thomas Fulton is also on the line, uh, Department of Conservation and Recreation Director of Stormwater and uh, environmental.
Great, yours?
If you could go to the first slide of the presentation, I'm gonna give a very high level uh, reason for why we're here, and then I'm gonna hand it over to Doug to talk about the um, impacts to the resource areas. So this project is part of the concrete harbor walk sidewalk that, that goes around Castle Island. Um, it is located sort of directly in between uh, the Clipper Ship Monument and the McCorkle Fishing Pier. Uh, it is the last four concrete panels on the harbor walk before you would physically step onto the pier. Uh, what has happened over the last number of years is that um, due to wave action underneath the pier, it has been slowly pulling out the existing gravel subbase to the sidewalk, uh, causing those panels to settle. The panel in the northernmost point of that location has settled uh, the most and they are slowly getting worse uh, as you work your way north to south. Um, currently, right now, the DCR uh, has some temporary barriers in place to protect the public, but this has really become a pretty big tripping hazard in this location. Um, Doug, why don't you take it away?
Thanks, Steve, and the commission. I just have a handful of slides to go through quickly to provide some context for our um, application. Um, the first slide, I, I think Steve just went through this. Uh, uh, next slide. This provides you a view of the existing conditions, one from the air and one also just from waterfront view looking at the pier. Um, the red box on the photograph to the left identifies those four um, concrete cells that would be replaced. Um, the photograph on the right is to provide a context for the pier. Um, so the pier is a pier in post-construction where the concrete panels are being replaced are not suspended over piers, but on earth and fill to the right of this photograph. So really, in the end, we are not proposing work over the water, um, but more in an area where it was previously filled to support that foundation. Next slide. Here's a few photographs of um, the site. Um, the four panels are really the lighter colored ones on the left. Um, you can see we already have some exclusion fence in there to keep the public away due to the public um, concerns for safety. Um, other photos really show the uplifting of some panels, the warping of others. And really, in the end, the top right-hand corner shows uh, the culprit for a lot of this in the fact that what, um, the foundation for these panels has eroded away. Um, and there are big gaps existing that will be filled as part of this project to support, so to support the new panels. Next slide. Statement of need, I mean, this is in our NOI, NOI, but really in the end, the proposed project will repair the side panels, protect for future erosion and really allow safe public access for the pier. The pier is really important for overall cat, um, for the park. It's important for waterfront viewing, bird watching, recreational fishing, um, really bringing people to Boston Harbor. Um, it's not, the project will not result in any increase to impervious surfaces and ha, will not have any adverse direct or indirect impacts to regulated waters or wellouts. Next slide. So this is really, the, the next few slides are just from the um, construction details. You can see these are the four panels that will be pulled up um, and replaced. The next slide, I believe, provides a cross-section, the next slide, please, provides a cross-section, which will really give us, and we can walk through the steps. In the end, those four panels will be demolished, removal of all four concrete panels, debris immediately removed off-site and existing materials below leveled and compacted as necessary to really support filling um, those void areas with lean concrete, which was selected in order to increase water permeability and prevent future sediment scouring from the wave tide action. Um, what's important to note is from a construction perspective, we will be building plywood framework that will be perfected, that will allow the pouring of concrete and be protective of the surrounding water. Construction to occur during low water conditions and when wide wave act, high wave action is not anticipated. Um, once that concrete's poured, a six millimeter poly vapor barrier will be placed. And on top of that, new concrete panels, which will be um, supported by one layer of five, um, five inch rebar at sixteen inches on center spacing. Again, we'll be using plywood framework for the, I'm casting in the panels. Um, and then standard concrete and rebar reinforcement. And then standard concrete and rebar reinforcement was selected to maximize panel strength and increase design longevity. I know the commission had asked in the past, as part of our review, the expected lifespan for these four new panels is thirty to forty years. Next slide, please. I think in the end, the following regulated areas, the project really is not, is really in buffer zones and waterfront areas. And so the buffer zones and waterfronts are associated with coastal beach, rocky intertidal shores, and coastal banks. The project is not located within either mapped estimated habitats or rare habitat or mapped priority habitats for rare species. Next slide. This is a slide, a plan view of the project. You can see the dark red box. Those four, yep.
No, go ahead. It was just stray noise.
Okay, sorry. The dark red square or rectangle form being the four panels that will be replaced. Really, in the end, what's important to emphasize here, temporary disturbance to the hundred foot buffer zones and water. And the waterfront areas, twenty five foot waterfront areas. If we go to the next slide, you'll see an accounting, which is part of our application. That really, they're all overlapping. Really, we're, in the end, we're impacting, temporarily impacting one hundred ninety two square feet to replace these four panels. They're all overlapping. Next slide. Chapter ninety one, we did consult with Massachusetts DEP Waterways Program, and we have consultation from them that no further chapter ninety one review or authorization is needed in the fact that they've confirmed that the project is viewed as maintenance to licensed structures. And the last slide is related to climate resilience. And really, in the end, we use the Resilient Mass Action Team, CR DST, to assess climate change considerations. Really, and we're focusing on maintenance of existing infrastructure that's critical to providing safe access to the public. The alternative analysis did not identify any feasible project alternative. The proposed project does not expand any of the existing footprint, and we're using lean concrete in order to increase water permeability and prevent that future sediment scouring from wave and tidal action that could be expected as part of climate change. The ecosystem services benefits associated with public access to open space really outweigh the climate resilient risks. And we do, and DCR does recognize as part of this that continued maintenance of existing infrastructure is just required to maintain that public access. And we've designed this to be thirty, forty years, but understanding that there will be maintenance required throughout that period. And that's all I have for the for the commission.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to mute yourself or send your questions to staff at cc@boston.gov. Okay, so a quick question on the last slide there. That group, it was, I can't remember now, the group that you consulted with regarding resiliency measures. Thank you. Resilient Mass Action Team. Who is that? Is that a?
It's just an online tool that we used. Yeah. And we basically ran the project through an online evaluation tool.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Got it.
That was our best way to evaluate it.
Understood. Elena, do you have anything on this?
I didn't have anything to add to this. We have some photos from the site visit in case the commission is interested in seeing the current conditions. And otherwise, I think that the presentation covered everything.
Great, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, there were, there were two slides. One of the slides you showed some of the old green railing they used to have. It looks in deplorable condition. Is that actually providing safety for the public from falling overboard? It's one, maybe about five slides back.
John, I can answer that question if you want. Thomas Fulton, Director of Stormwater, DCR. We got administrative approval probably six, seven months ago to replace that most, if not all of that railing. And it's special order railing. It's taken months and months and months to come in. So there is, there is action being taken to replace the railing as it comes in. DCR does recognize that the railing needs to get replaced.
Right. And then the next slide after that one, you showed a six inch slab. That's going to be structural slab, sitting on top of what you call lean concrete, three thousand PSI. But you don't tell us how fit that is, and you get those little squiggle lines because it could be ten feet thick or four foot thick. Now, there's the railing. It's the next slide from that one. Next one down.
Understood. Yeah, next slide. And Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, it's about three to four feet deep maximum? We measured, you measured it. We have a number of photographs we could provide the commission.
Yeah, and so it really depends on where you are. Because like I said, that northernmost panel has had the most existing subgrade pulled out below it, and it gets a little less worse as you work your way south. So, you know, as they remove those, demolish those existing concrete panels, the contractor would be able to tell whether or not he's on stable ground and how much lean concrete essentially he would need to to fill in to have a stable base for the new concrete to be cast on top of.
So that could be in the order of two to three feet in height, and that'll be the width of the panels?
I, two to three feet sounds excessive to me. I thought, I thought the most we had measured down was was closer to a foot or eighteen inches. I can go back and confirm that, but.
I'm seeing about two feet.
Yes.
Steve, I'm seeing a photograph of about two feet, just under slightly under two.
Closer to the pier, yeah. I think, John, I think it gets a little deeper, you know, closer to the pier. And as you move further away from the pier and then move further south, it gets, you know, it's not as deep. Most of the material that is washed away started in the northern section of the panels closest to the pier. Yeah. So it's a little deeper there, and then we're not going to remove stable material if we don't have to. I think the deepest it would be is eighteen or two feet deep, though.
Yeah, okay, so this would just be used more or less as a form for the concrete panel that you're pouring above it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Laney?
Yeah, when you, when you say that the lean concrete will increase water permeability, can you elaborate on that? Is that indicating or meaning that this will allow or prevent water from degrading and washing out the material? Or I'll let you, I'll let you speak to that.
Yes, you are correct. So compacted gravel really doesn't have a means to prevent water from entering in, infiltrating into it. And then with the tidal action then coming out would pull that material out. The lean concrete is essentially, looks like concrete, just has a little bit less of a compressive strength than a standard structural concrete that would be almost double, closer to six thousand PSI, but gives you that same clean face and has the material is stuck together with the, you know, the makeup of the concrete that would not allow water to infiltrate and pull any of that material out as it would be cast in one large rectangular piece.
Okay, and then I assume you're mixing this material on site since it's a small quantity or?
I don't know that that's been determined. You know, usually we let contractor means and methods dictate, you know, where that would would occur. I don't know, Tom, if you have a thought on that, but.
Typically, we would have a cement truck come in. They would just on site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Condon?
So is lean concrete porous?
porous, no.
No.
Okay, so it won't let water pass through is really what you were saying?
That is correct. Yes, if I, if I misspoke, I, I meant to say that gravel would allow water to pass through. The lean concrete does not allow the water to pass through.
Right, that makes sense. So what's the climate resilience quality then of clean concrete?
The quality there is the added lifespan and not having to revisit this project in a shorter duration. Really, the only other alternative would be to go back to a compacted gravel subbase, which would, you know, essentially result in having to come back out in a shorter period to redo this project again. And we'll get that longer lifespan out of the, out of the lean concrete.
That makes sense. Is that what happened? You know, you were pointing to the culprit earlier in the presentations. What, what was the cause?
The, the, the cause was that there was nothing to prevent the wave action from coming up underneath the pier and pulling the existing subgrade material, which was just compacted gravel, back out into Boston Harbor.
Yep.
I see. So with the lean concrete in place, that's less likely to happen or won't happen.
Correct.
And, I mean, the mention of climate resilience does make me think about this. I mean, I appreciate the consideration for climate and with resilience, we're often talking about adaptation, meaning how do we cope with whatever is inevitable in terms of climate change? But those, we sort of also make it inevitable by just making climate change worse, right? By using material that essentially involves carbon emissions. Concrete is one of the worst culprits when it comes to climate change because of the amount of emissions it involves. And these days, there are alternatives. Do you consider those alternatives? Are there places where you think this is a good place to try this out? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I, I do not. That's, that's outside of my level of expertise. We did have our internal coastal structural engineer pull together these plans. Certainly, I could, I could have a further discussion with them to see if there are any other options, but that's, that's not something I can, could speak to tonight.
I appreciate that.
Maybe Tom wants to speak to that.
I don't much, have much to add either, other than it's only four panels and, you know, maybe about a yard and a half of lean concrete. I mean, in a bigger project, we would probably certainly entertain and look at, you know, other alternatives, you know, to concrete, you know, in the, you know, sustainable way. But this is such a small project that I don't think, I don't think that was looked at.
That, that makes sense to me. I mean, a small change is not going to have a lot of impact. And the amount of negative impact is also relatively less because it is a small project. On the same vein, though, a small project is also a place where you can learn things by doing some experiments where you feel the risk is low enough. And if we don't try it, how will we ever know, right? So that's all, but I appreciate.
I definitely agree with that, Commissioner, but this is an area that really has a lot of public, you know, facing concerns to it, where it would be tough to have a pilot project in this, in this area. We would not want to go back to this location if it failed.
Appreciate it. Great. Well, hopefully, there's another more opportune place where you can try that.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, Commissioner SS Margiazi.
I'm completely comfortable with the replacement project and your approach. I think the confusion that you raised for the two previous commissioners has to do with the words increased water permeability.
I agree.
Which you, you then directly contradicted in your. I'm assuming that whatever's on this slide here and in the notice of intent somehow or other got confused somewhere along the line, and someone decided permeability sounded good, but.
We apologize and completely agree. I was having the same thought.
I read it about four times when I was reviewing the materials and thought this doesn't make any sense, particularly permeable with vapor barrier on top of it. So I'd be glad to hear you clear that up. It does look like a plausible path to keeping this stuff in place for a reasonable amount of time.
Excuse me. Your vapor permeability comment got me there. The barrier sort of self-evident. Okay. Okay, Elena, I don't see any hands. Did you get any emails?
No emails about this either.
Okay, great. So with that, I would entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions and close the hearing.
Still moved.
Give a second. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner SS Margiazi?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six twenty sixteen, Boston file number twenty twenty five dash zero two five from Child's Engineering on behalf of the Boston Planning and Development Agency for the proposed construction of new mooring dolphins, the replacement of pile encasements with jackets, and the repair of existing reinforced concrete decking. Three Dolphin Way in South Boston waterfront resource areas are designated port area, land under ocean, land subject to coastal storm flowage and twenty five foot waterfront area. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
This is Charlie Roberts from Child's Engineering. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I just myself, I believe, so I can quickly kind of run through what we're doing on this. So if we go to the next slide, give us the location. So that's the, the, the Marine Park in South Boston. So you can see down there, South Jetty, just below, below the, the blue building. Go to the next slide. This is in its current condition. So, so right now, there's a, a separate project that's demolishing part of the South Jetty. This has been deteriorated for some time, and so they're pulling out of the, they've been taking off the concrete deck and some of the, some of the piles that have come off from that as part of that, and then also putting in a little bit more of a concrete barrier behind the existing sheet piles. That's been, that's currently under construction or demolition right now, and that was under a separate order of conditions from that. So just moving to the next slide. This is kind of how it looks right now. Sorry, these aren't the best photos, but you can see how it's been removed back. And so there's still portions of the existing deck there with some of the, some of the original piles, you know, from that. So if you go to the next slide, what we're proposing to do, and this really is, and you'll see this, and unfortunately, you have to deal with me for the next, next presentation as well. After this, this is for sale, Boston, and so we're trying to provide some, some mooring dolphins in order to birth some of the larger vessels, you know, for that next year, and then obviously for use in the future. So you have these four individual, you know, birthing dolphins. Then you've got the two gray areas shaded. That's the existing deck that that's still remaining, so we're going to do some repair work to that so that can be used as part of an on, on and offloading area from it. And then behind that, you see four of those balled locations from that, but that's new mooring bards that are going to go in there to help for the tying up of the ship to the, to the mooring dolphins from that. So that's going to be, you know, new piles for the, for the, for the four dolphins that you see there. Then concrete repairs, as you mentioned in the opening summary. And if you go to the next slide, they've got a couple of sections for you. So this is the section where it's being repaired at the, at the deck area. So if you across to the left there, you see there's three piles in that bent, and they're going to have those typical standard jackets put onto them to repair and repair those, some, some minor concrete repairs to the underdeck. And then going to the right, you'll see that we're replacing the existing piles. Originally, we had hoped to be able to reuse part of the, the existing piles, but they were unfortunately, most of them were damaged during the, during the demolition process from that. So we're going to drive new piles and put new framing in as part of that, and then put the seat cushion you see on the front there against a fender panel, and that will allow for the birthing of the vessel against that. And then if you go to the next slide, this is just a typical section of the new ballad that we're proposing behind the existing bulkhead, you know, from that. So just a kind of mass concrete with the new ballad connected into it, and then with a series of dead men back to that, obviously trying to minimize the amount of disturbance from that. So that's just a very brief summary of what we're, what we're planning to do.
Great, thank you. Quick question, what is a wild? Great. Thank you. Um quick question. Uh what is a wild uh timber piling?
Um one that is not connected to anything else from that. Not crazy, but uh just uh not connected.
Oh, interesting. Okay, thank you. Um I don't really have anything on this. Eleanor, what do you have?
I didn't have anything on this either. Uh similar to the previous project, we conducted a site visit and uh there are additional photos in the dry folder for the commission's review.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, you didn't show a dimension, but how far away is that dead man from the uh the concrete you're pouring for the you know, the tie up of the boats. This is the last slide you had.
Um I believe it's about twenty feet, ten or twenty feet.
All right. Is it required to be that far away just for the weight of the soil to to may have the dead man work or?
Exactly. Yeah, you just need the basically, it's the angle I proposed from the soil as far as not bringing out the area of influence of the the mass mass structure from that.
Yeah. And and how many? Is that a continual dead man or is that occasional dead man?
Um if you go back two slides, you can see that you've got um a mass concrete in the middle, but then there's the each of them have got a pair of dead men on either side of them.
Yeah, okay. All right. That that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Linay?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Wilson?
I just thought Dolphin Way was named for the animal, but now I'm realizing it wasn't. And Sid was some part of the boat. So this is a part of the world where I learn a lot. So thank you.
Thank you. You're not helping with me controlling my laughter.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sullivan's conversation. Okay, Commissioner Conan?
Interesting name indeed. I I kind of, I'm so struggling to understand where the dolphins even are in that proposed work diagram. I'm sorry, can you just point it out to me, please?
So if you you um if you see whether you see the large rectangle that's the kind of indicates the possible work barge, that's now, that would be a berth against one of the proposed dolphins. So the four structures that are that are out there. Uh I don't know if someone else has got a mouse, they could maybe hover over it to help. I don't think I can, don't think I'm able to do that, right?
Only DD, I think.
Um but those four structures that are outshore it towards the harbor, so page page down.
Four structures. Are they labeled as?
Dolphin?
Yes, so so well, for um new fender unit.
Oh, fender units. Okay, I see them. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, let's see. Are they usually in a straight line or are they not?
Yeah, so if the depending on the vessel, but yes, typically that allows the, those will be in contact with the hull of the vessel um from that.
Let's see. How far from the water or oh, sorry, how far from the sea wall are they?
And the outshore faces sixty seven feet.
Sixty seven feet.
And this That that lines up with kind of where it was originally before it was uh before it was demoed now from that.
Let's see. And as the water rises and falls, this is supposed to be what helps the ship dock.
So if you go down, if you if you can go forward one slide, please. So you can see you got the 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 sea cushion on the out on the on the right of the page. And you can see that in the low water condition and then the high water condition, you know, from that. So it's able just to to kind of float up and down with the vessel, you know, contacting. So we're just, it's a it's a large contact board in a from that.
All right. Great. Wow. Interesting. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
Uh nothing from me on this. Nice set of drawings. Easy to understand.
Thank you.
Great. Uh just want to remind members of the public, if they uh want to get in on the fun here um to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine or star and star six to unmute yourself um or send your questions to staff via email at ccatboston.gov. Um Eleanor, we got um we got no comments from DMF that we need to include in the order of conditions, right?
No, I believe that they did not have any um resource concerns because of the best management practices that were already included in the filing.
Okay, great. Okay, I don't see any hands up. Uh do you? And did you get any emails?
No emails, and I see no hands either.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions and close the hearing. That was it. Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries uh six nothing. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, uh Charlie's not going anywhere, right? Um
Sorry.
Notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six twenty sixty two, Boston file number twenty twenty five dash zero two seven from Charles Engineering on behalf of the Boston Planning and Development Agency for the proposed demolition and replacement of approximately sixty one deteriorator deteriorated piles and associated timber whales and chocks under Pier Four on Eighth Street in Charlestown uh resource areas land under ocean. It's all yours.
Excellent. So we're gonna switch from dolphins to whales now. And uh so um so this is over at Pier Four in uh in Charlestown. If you go to the next slide, um you can see there um you know, of the um from that, for those of you familiar, this is again linked to the last um last project for sale of Boston to make some necessary repairs to it in order to to receive some of the the tall ships in um next year. Uh so if you go to the next slide, um this just shows some of the resource areas, you know, from that. Again, this is going to be an in-kind um fender replacement. So if where if you go to the next slide, um you'll see some of the pictures where there's some deteriorated timbers. Some of them have kind of got minor minor splits on them. Other sections are are missing and need to be um uh need to be uh you know, replaced um from that. As you can see, a couple of wild piles um there on the right photo. Um going to the next slide. Um you know, this, these are, these are just, um you can kind of see the match lines there as we go along, but just highlighting some of the areas where we plan to to replace in kind, you know, from that, um both the 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 timber piles as well as the uh the 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 whales and chocks from that. If you go to the next slide, just a continuation down there. So like we mentioned, there's the kind of sixty one in in total uh piles from that and and the associated and timber. So if you go to the next slide, it'll be a little clearer in the in the sections. So looking across at the left there, so you've got a complete uh timber pile. And then you have that that lower whale that helps port um um from that, that just stops vessels when it's lower coming uh into contact down there. And the top, you have the same thing. You have a chalk that sits in between the two piles. Um and then also um a whale that kind of runs behind that and that connects back into it. So in a lot of cases, those are deteriorated over time because they're timber. Um a number of these were replaced um several years ago for the last a last event. And so it's just trying to stay on top and replace these now. And then that section to the right, you can see that's just the the gray kind of demoed areas where you can see that the round piles on the outshore face towards the bottom of the page, and then the chocks in between that and the whales, you know, right behind them um to that. Um and that is pretty much it. These are again all just in-kind replacements from that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just want to remind members of the public, if you want to uh provide commentary on this public hearing, uh please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. Um if you're calling in by um phone and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at ccatboston.gov. Um I don't have any questions on this, Eleanor.
I didn't have anything either. Thank you.
Commissioner Sullivan?
What species of wood do you use in these?
Uh typically uh sou- southern yellow pine um with uh there's there's treated depending on.
Yep, all right. That's it. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um Commissioner Linay?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, no, nothing. I agree with Commissioner Smargiazi. I see that uh great drawings.
Uh Commissioner Conan?
Great drawings. Comment was the first for the previous presentation, but I'm sure it holds good to this one too. So how does an entire whale go missing?
deterioration from that. It just just over time. And the same thing with the connections. It's just obviously the marine environment is fairly harsh. Um and so it's just, and and again, it's designed for vessels to birth up against. So over time, if it gets hit, you know, it's no different to, you know, your the your your deck in in your backyard that over time, the the deck balls just deteriorate. It's just it's the same same here, really. It's just a little bit more advanced because of the harsher condition.
It just falls off. Is that what happens?
Yeah, yeah.
And how many such whales are missing?
Um I don't remember offhand the exact quantities. Most of them are still still attached, but in 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 not a great shape, and so will be removed and then um you know, disposed of appropriately.
And in kind replacement means the same size, same, you know, thickness, everything. Is that what it means?
Correct. Yeah, we're not changing the design. We're just we're just uh replacing stuff that's kind of outlived its useful life.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sort of interesting. Uh that reminded me of something. Uh I I live over there, so um and I remember from the first Pier Four um filing when the uh pier needed a lot of repair. Uh there is a fair amount of scouring from when they open uh the gridly locks uh between the river and the river and the harbor. I didn't realize it came all that far into the harbor. Um and what made me uh remember that was the conversation plus something you put in your NOI about um impacts of the river, which um I thought was a typo for the harbor, but in thinking that maybe you actually did mean the river. Something about sedimentation in the river, somewhere in the NOI.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I yeah, I just remember that from last time. There's quite a bit of scouring. Yeah, yeah, which is, it's pretty far away.
It is. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh and and again, I don't think that's, I mean, they're obviously recently they dredged a lot of the harbor, you know, from that, and that's what's there. Although there's there's still some hotspot just offshore of there, you know, from it. Um but uh that's that's the hope of the plan is to bring in some of the some of the tall ships to this location, you know, like we did, like we did a few years ago.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of stuff going on, going on underneath the surface there. Um Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
No, nothing further for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Eleanor, I don't see any hands. Uh do you? And did you get any emails?
No emails, and I see no hands.
Okay, so that I'd entertain a motion to issue the order conditions and close the hearing. Okay, I'll take that as a movement in a second. Uh Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six twenty sixty three, Boston file number twenty twenty five dash zero two eight from Epsilon Associates Inc. on behalf of Channelside Acquisitions LLC for the proposed installation of a pile-supported ramp and pile-anchored floating dock in the Fort Point Channel at two forty four to two eighty four A Street, South Boston waterfront. Resource areas are land under ocean, land subject to coastal storm flowage, coastal bank, one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank and twenty five foot waterfront area. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening, Chair Parker. Eric Rexford from Epsilon Associates here on behalf of Channelside Acquisitions LLC. I'm also joined by Rob Adams from Halverson Design, landscape architect for the Channelside Project. You're not getting rid of Charlie yet. He's here also working on this project, so he's sticking around for this one. Uh and Andrew Wong from Channelside Acquisitions is here with me this evening.
Great. Floor is all yours.
Appreciate that. Can you jump ahead to the next slide? Um I know the commission is familiar with the Channelside site. We were on your agenda earlier this summer. Sorry, I missed the hearing. Glad to be here again this evening. Uh thanks for having us. Um we are talking about installing a a public access uh dock at the Channelside site. Um the Channelside site's located at two forty four, two eighty four A Street. The entire Channelside site is bounded in yellow below. Uh if you could jump to the next slide, um just to help orient folks, this is looking east towards the convention center, the large building in the back. Uh bottom right is the Gillette Pump House, and on the left side, at least in this image, is the Eli Lilly facility under construction. That's done. And the Channelside site is the the large parking lot right in the middle. Um again, the Channelside site's a subject of a separate order of conditions. That's the comprehensive redevelopment of this site. Uh and if you can jump to the next slide, we are talking about installing a dock, a public access dock in this location. This is existing conditions. I just want to make clear for the purposes of the conversation tonight, um the dock will connect to the condition proposed by the Channelside Project. So the dock doesn't make any material change to the Channelside Project itself, grading, landscape, materials all remain the same. To put it bluntly, the dock just connects to the Channelside Project at this location uh on the Channelside site. But if you go to the next slide, we can put that in the context of what the Channelside Project will look like. Um so again, Channelside's three buildings, G four, five, and six. The dock will be installed at the location in the red box below in front of uh G five and next to the the Gillette Pump House. Uh it'll be accessed from Harbor Walk that's going to be constructed by the the Channelside Project. Um and extend out into the channel from there. If you can go to the next slide, I think you'll see a render of what this is going to look like. Yeah, so G five building and the pump house in the background. Um everything on the land side is constructed by by the Channelside Project. We're literally just connecting to it. You get a sense of some of the user groups that's intended to make use of this facility. So small boats, canoes, kayaks, the large red boats are dragon boats. There's a active dragon boat fleet in the Fort Point Channel. So this dock has been designed to accommodate that user. Uh and one other important user that'll make use of this facility is the uh Fort Point Neighborhood Arts Community has a long history of launching art into the channel. Um and this dock will go in a bit more detail on that. This dock has been designed uh to accommodate that user group as well. Uh next slide, please. I think this is plan view. Yeah, just giving you some dimensions of the dock. Um you can see on the left side, it'll connect to Harbor Walk. Uh I like to think of the dock as sort of three components, uh A, B, and C. We'll start at the landward side with A, where it connects to Harbor Walk. That is a pile-supported ramp. Um there are six piles that'll be installed within land subject to tidal action to support that dock. Uh that ramp rather, it's twenty five feet wide, approximately thirty feet long. Segment B is articulated. Um it connects to the floating ramp, so tidal um high tide, low tide changes that that ramp B will articulate with the tidal variation. Again, twenty five feet uh wide to accommodate dragon boats, launching of art primarily. That's the extra width. But it'll go down to um the C one, two, and three, and D, that's the floating dock. That'll be held in place by uh four pipe piles installed with a land under ocean. The segment label D is actually a ramp that goes down into the water to facilitate, you know, canoes, kayaks actually getting into the water. Um next slide, please. I think this is the, this is Charlie's drawing. It was included with the notice of intent. I won't focus on this one too much. Uh but if you can go to the next one, it's the section view. I just want to point out a couple of things. You'll see a heavy dashed line around some components on the left side of the drawing. Everything within that box is the subject of the Channelside Order of Conditions. So you can see we're connecting to a concrete pile cap that's already authorized under that order. Um everything outside of that box, more or less, is the subject of this notice of intent. And I want to point out a couple of things within land subject to tidal action, which is really located under that fixed segment of the ramp on the left side. Uh again, six piles will be um installed within land subject to tidal action. There is more or less at low water and the seaward extent of land subject to tidal action, an existing sheet pile bulkhead. Um between that bulkhead and landward of a new bulkhead that will be installed as part of the Channelside Project. Uh it's currently a riprap slope. That area is in pretty tough condition. They're going to clean it up uh and install some new riprap in that location. Uh next slide, please. Uh again, just some dimensions of the dock showing, you know, the potential user groups. You can get multiple dragon boats in and out of the water tied up here while also accommodating canoes and kayaks. Probably not at the same time, but again, public art can be launched from this um dock. The design brief was more or less, you know, we need to be able to accommodate twenty foot by twenty foot pieces of art. So hence the twenty five foot wide. So hence the twenty-five foot wide ramp. Um, next slide, uh, actually it's a series of three slides. I think you can go through quite quickly. Just sort of shows how. Art might be launched on this, on this dock. Um, there's pad eyes and bollards that are integrated into the design. To allow lines and tackle to lower stuff down into the water. Um, again, uh, Charlie's here to answer questions about the engineering, um, Rob Adams. If you have questions about landscape. And Andrew Wong, who was instrumental in the actual design of the dock is here. So if you have questions about that, um. We're happy to answer them, but without, I'll turn it back over to the commission. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Um, okay. Um, I don't have a lot of questions. I am looking and, um. We might get to this in the, uh, public comment period because I see Mr. Log is, um. Uh, on the call here. I have this letter from Gillette. Um, so a couple of quick things here. Some of this, uh. Falls outside of the, um, commission's jurisdiction, but, um, as far as, uh. I assume, and I guess this is a question for Andrew, that you have talked to your neighbor? And this is not a surprise?
Yes, yes. We've been, uh, engaged quite closely with, uh, Gillette and specifically John Log, um, on a number of occasions for this entire development. Um, so we also acknowledge the letter and, and understand the concerns. Um, we're confident that we can work through most of the questions and resolve a lot of these details as we develop this project. So.
Okay, okay. So, um, as far as. Just looking at this, the protection of the saltwater intake operations, uh, that is something that you'll have to talk neighbor to neighbor about. Um. Want us to implement and maintain sediment control measures within four-point channel that are adequate to protect Gillette's saltwater intake operations. Um, I don't know, maybe Commissioner Sullivan will have a comment on that. I'm not sure how we do that. The, uh, bottom topography concerns. Um. I guess the question, so, so for you, Andrew, I mean, uh, at least one and two have to deal with, um. Potential alterations that would interfere with that, um. The saltwater pump house intake screen. Uh, so I think those are. Neighbor discussions, long-term maintenance and liability con- considerations. As far as the, uh, long-term maintenance of the, um. Uh, the dock itself, uh, do we have a plan for that? I mean, it's, um. Seems like a good idea. I'm sure you have some sort of prot- protocol to, um, inspect the dock for maintenance to prevent deterioration.
Yeah.
We'll have a plan.
Yeah, please.
Um, I'll also add that this facility is subject of a chapter ninety-one license, waterways license. Um, so many of the conditions, you know, requirements to maintain, um, to a certain standard will be baked into that license. Um, but yes, there will be a, o- operations and, and maintenance, um, program for the dock facility.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for making that distinction. Easement area coordination. That's a discussion between you two. Proposed fill on Gillette property. Are you going to be doing any fill on their property? I would assume not, right? And maybe when, maybe when we get to public comment, this, maybe Mr. Log can clarify that, but. Um, Harbor Walk access requirements, uh, that's a quick question we, we, we sometimes ask as far as during construction. What's the protocol going to be for, um, keeping the Harbor Walk as accessible as possible?
Um, maybe Andrew, you, you might remember better than I, but I think we had worked out or are in the process of working out with DEP. You know, rerouting Harbor Walk during the channel side construction. So there'd be a couple of different phases where Harbor Walk would be relocated. Depending where construction is occurring and that rerouting of Harbor Walk, you know, would apply during the installation of the dock as well.
Okay, sounds good. And then I saw the dialogue between, uh, DMF and Elena regarding the width of the, uh, dock. And I understand why it's as wide as it is. Um, what was DMF's concern? Um, just that it's just taking up more area and volume? Um. In a wetlands resource area?
Chair Parker, sorry, was that directed toward me?
It was directed to anyone who might.
Yeah, that's my understanding. I think that, um, in DMF's email, they, they basically said that, you know, they were interested in knowing. Uh, more details about why the width of the dock is what it is. Um, and they said that. Based on their review of the application, they understood that it had something to do with art, but didn't fully understand. Why a wider width was required and they wanted to know if the commission had any concerns. So after our site visit, I responded to them, um, explained that this had gone through, uh, an extensive, um. Public engagement process, which resulted in, uh, the conclusion that the dock should be this width to allow for certain structures to, uh, be. Uh, for this to be used to get certain, um, pieces of art into the four-point channel. And, uh, they seemed to be fine with that. So I think they were just interested in understanding. How this came about, but they didn't actually explain that they had any concerns. I think they were just curious about the, the width since it was different from what they usually see.
Yeah, because I didn't see that in the correspondence. So they didn't say anything like, uh, this, this, uh, uh, causes more shading impacts to.
No, which was funny. Yeah. It, it seemed to be mostly out of curiosity.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. Um, okay. Elena, um, do you have anything else on this?
Uh, I did not have anything else on this. Oh, or excuse me, actually, um, I misspoke. I think that, um, there was the outstanding question of the construction fence. Um, there's one condition. That, uh, we had yet to finalize and, um, Eric, apologies if, if I missed that, but, um. I think that the, the question was just whether, uh, a fence surrounding the project site could have the eight-inch gap at the bottom to allow for. Any wildlife to move under it.
Yeah, um, thanks, Elena. That condition was not included in the channel side order. Um, so I, I guess, I, I think there are security concerns and other concerns about that type of fencing. I don't think that's typical for projects in Boston. Um, Andrew, I don't know if you had heard back from your construction team, anything specific on that, but, um, I'm, I'm not quite. Certain how we would implement that for the dock project.
Um, we've, uh, sure, yeah, I share this question, but to our construction team, but, um. Given the timing, um, have not heard back yet. Um, but agree, we can continue to pursue this and see, um. If there are security concerns, if this is a special type of fencing or raising the fence itself, um, will cause any. Thing unusual, but, um, we, we can follow up with that.
My, so my recommendation on that, if the commission doesn't have any other, um, outstanding items for this project is that we could just. Uh, match it to what was used for the, the broader channel side NOI so that everything is uniform. Um, and if the, if that was included in, in the, um, order of conditions, I, I don't remember off the top of my head if it was. Um, then I feel like we should probably include it here as well, but if it wasn't, which is what your recollection is, um, then we probably don't need to include it in this either.
Yeah. I just, I just don't recall doing that and I'm going to defer to Commissioner Wilson on this because his memory. Um, I think is the best of all of us. Um, but I don't remember doing something, uh, along the coastal waterfront. Um, with that eight-inch separation in the past. Um, but I could be wrong. Um.
Peace. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, okay. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we ever had the eight inch. And what wildlife is that? Rats?
Raccoons.
Wildlife.
Rabbits.
Rabbits?
There's a surprising amount of rabbits over there, but.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, they should stay out of construction zones.
Valid, valid.
When, when do you think this might be built?
Um, it, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't go before the channel side project itself. So it's, it's going to be tied to the G four, G five construction, which sort of happens. Uh, um, together. Those, those buildings are tied together.
Right. And those are scheduled to be built. Five years now?
I'll defer to Andrew on that.
Yeah, really, uh, unknown at this time. We're, I know market conditions drive this. Uh, many projects are in the, the city. So, um, as soon as we can secure some commercial tenants, um, we helped to get a green line. Proceed with this, but. Once we go, the dur- construction duration will be a while. And I think, um. You know, part of it is tied to the licensing of the open spaces. This is obviously tied directly to the, one of the licenses for the waterfront open space. And so.
Right.
Um, specifics of that will have to be worked out whether this is concurrents or sequential after that waterfront open space in the Harbor Walk. We're trying to obviously minimize the closure of the Harbor Walk is to a, as short a duration as possible.
Right. And this would be built after the Harbor Walk was built, correct?
Um, aft or contemporaneously, it, it, it really depends on specifics of, you know, obviously bringing equipment in and not, you know, destroying. The very finished Harbor Walk and you're bringing, you know, cranes and trucks. So trying to, we gotta figure that out.
And you guys may wind up building that Harbor Walk of the city, Mike, because they're talking about. Whether the city wants to raise it for protection of the neighborhood. Correct?
That is correct. Uh, we, we are engaged with the city regarding the, um, their Birm project. Um, again, it's a timing issue, but ultimately the channel side projects, um, would in many ways. Take over that tenant, um, engineering, uh, you know, attention of that Birm, um, to a finer degree. Um, so.
I just, I'm just trying to understand how this, you know, I gotta make sure I leave notes for my grandkids so they know when this stuff is being built, what's going on. The, um, the, when it's a twenty-five foot wide, is this a public dock? You can get down there twenty-four, seven or what's? What's up with that? I mean, public, I can go on it, but can public people go on it?
Yep. Absolutely. Yeah. The intent is this is fully public. Um, and they know that intended users are, you know. Is everybody, anybody. Um, there really follows the original waterfront, um, um, watershed activation plan. Um, in the early two thousands, um, you know, high level, any kind of activities that we can bring people to the water. Um, that really was it. Um, so our original design was more modest in shape and size, uh, but I think the engagement, but the community, especially the artist groups and the. Dragon boats, they, uh, made a very convincing argument with us to really do something a little bit different than. Some of the other kayak launches, say, um, up and down the channel or other parts of the city. So, um, their need and design, um, you know, drove, drove the design of what this thing is. And so it really was a direct response to that. So.
Right. And then you're, you're only keeping it in place with a couple of piles so that the, you're not really blocking the water that has to be used by the saltwater intake for Gillette. Um.
Correct. That's very far away. Yep.
Yeah. And I actually see if anything, they may discharge when they're discharging the effluent. Whether that would bother you guys with, you know, coming down the channel at low tide when you were pulling out. So.
My understanding is that intake is an intake only, uh, not a discharge, but, um.
Was it this?
We have no concerns from the Channelside.
I thought it discharged there too. There's an intake. Where's the discharge further down?
Yeah, south, southward on the channel.
Much further down. Yep. Toward the end of the channel, more closely to their, um, property.
So I guess the race is on whether Gillette builds before you or after you guys. That's.
Yes. Friendly race. Yeah.
I'll, I'll leave the note for them for that too. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Um, how do you picture people getting the boats down here? So is there any concern that, you know. People try to drive onto the Harbor Walk to drop off kayaks or dragon boats?
Um, if you could, if the, whoever's controlling the screen could go back a couple of slides to say they're rendering. And the giant apple or here is fine. Thank you. Um. Uh, correct. So the dragon boats, as we understand from the user groups, um, are rather large, about forty feet long. Um, maybe weighing up to five, two hundred pounds or so. Um, my understanding is they would be hand-carried from. Uh, you know, after being towed, um, from a truck or trailer. Um, so we are not. The Harbor Walk itself would not be allowed as public rivalable area, right? Even though. We, that is wide enough for emergency vehicles, uh, which is an important part that also the community had requested, um, ambulances and such. So, uh, the boats would be hand-carried in this case.
Um, and then what's the material of the, the decking?
Charlie, do you want to answer that in less than your words?
Uh, timber. I think it's, uh, southern yellow pine at the moment.
Okay.
Your favorite. And any, is there any gap that allow any light through or are they pretty tight joints? I know.
Uh, it's, it's, it's pretty tight and that's more just to stop people from getting, I mean, um. Getting heels or other things, you know, trapped down there when this is part of a walking surface. There's enough to allow the timber to, to swell. Um, and to, to expand and contract, but it's not there to provide any, uh, enough to provide light through. Or any realistic light.
Okay.
Part of the inspiration where some of the boathouses you might see on the Charles River, um, a Harvard or boathouse or the. My people houses. So these very wide ramps that, um, were pretty much con- continuous.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at. C C at boston.gov. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, no, love the use of southern yellow pines. Good stuff. Um, but. So yeah, quick question. One, I guess two things from the historic record, right? Uh, there's a pier that went in associated with that Eli Lilly billet, building. And at the time, there's sort of like a wide. I guess headland piece that had a narrow gangway that went down to a wide float for some of these same reasons. And this design sort of probably resonates more with the communities that were asking for. Sort of a wide start and a wide end and got a narrow gangway in between. I was just wondering, like, is this in addition to that? Is that because of that not serving needs that they'd asked for before? Um, whether the sort of, you know, dog leg configuration of it was problematic. Versus this going straight out into the watershed.
I, maybe Andrew can speak more to this. I don't think that facility, that, the dock further up the channel was ever really intended to launch. Art. I think the, the use case for this dock came out of, you know, years of dialogue with the community during the. The permitting process for the Channelside Project. Um, but certainly, you know, the, the design of this reflects that, that need, you know, as you mentioned, you know, it's a straight shot down to the water. Um, I think this really functions in addition to, rather than a replacement of that other facility down the channel. Um, if that answers your question.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything to build upon that?
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm just to build upon that. Um, I, I, absolutely. That's would be exactly my answer. I think part of it too is during the process with the floating art. Groups, um, actually requested a boat ramp, like literally what you'd see where you launch a motorboat or something and off a trailer into the water. Um, we felt that was prohibitively challenging and, and costly frankly, and, and created a whole series of issues in terms of access and safety. And so, but the concept of that wide ramp really was driving the, the shape of this. Um, so yes, I'm looking at a picture right now of that fifteen necko pier, um, both the geometry of that with the dog leg. And the, basically the traditional four to five foot width, um, a little gangway really wasn't suitable for the artists. Um, even though they occasionally may have launched some other small, smaller pieces of art over their twenty. Twenty-five, twenty-seven year history of floating art in Boston. But, um, you know, at the end of the day, um, we're pleased because we think the artist group. Has been tremendously pleased with this result as, has been the dragon boat, um, users. So, um. You know, really this design was a community-led effort that resulted in this, this product.
Sure. No, that, that, that's great to hear that it's sort of in addition to and sort of gives additional flexibility. Um, to follow up on one question that Commissioner Sullivan had in terms of just access for the sort of view, fully accessible. We've had other peers where the community has, um, whenever been very interested in restricting access. Especially after hours, especially to things that are wider than, you know, just a single person type of thing. What, what's sort of, I'm not seeing anything in, say, in this rendering right here. Um, sort of at that land-water interfaces, are there other access restrictions elsewhere that?
Um, yes, that's a great observation. Um, these renderings were, um, you know, certainly produced a little bit earlier. And we since discussed concerns for, um, restricting access, um, balancing that. Need for public access, but also safety after hours and such. So we have discussed. The probability, high likelihood of creating some type of, um, fence or gate at the top. We'll have to work at the mechanics, whether that's a swinging gate or sliding gate. We'll have to work at the mechanics, whether that's a swinging gate or sliding gate that we see typically among the other docks and gangways in the area to, you know, really, again, question limit, limiting time and access and public safety. So that is definitely in the works and will be discussed and developed.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that this is sort of the sort of vehicular access level of prevention as opposed to and, you know, not, you know, it doesn't need to be right there necessarily at the top of the ramp, but probably, you know, where there's a will, there's a way with folks that we've seen before. I guess, yeah, that's not necessarily part of our purview, but would typically be part of, I think, of some of the drawings that we would have seen at least. And then the last question I had is I couldn't find anything and this probably goes back into the history books of folks, when they do launch art, when it's great art, they don't necessarily have the correct permissions for putting things onto the watershed for the amount of time they're anticipating they might be there type of thing. And I believe the commission has done like enforcement orders and stuff like that beforehand. And obviously you can't be responsible for everything, but I'm thinking something down the lines of some sort of signage that, you know, that there's a coordinating authority for these sorts of things and whatnot.
That's a good point, Commissioner Wilson. I think much like the gate, that type of information would be baked into the management plan for the chapter 91 license. And certainly those conversations with the Waterways Program at DEP would perhaps send us in one direction or another, whether that's signage or if it's just information that's shared with user groups before they launch art, for example. But yeah, that's a very good point. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Yeah, no, just, I don't know, I guess I'm commission, channeling former Commissioner Lee on this one for the things at that land-water interface. So I'll defer to other folks here. Thanks.
You know, it'd be nice if we didn't fill in the 72 inch outfall we show there with stone, just for kicks.
It's not realistic, hard to say.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Condon?
Thanks, Jeff Parker. It definitely looks great. It seems like an ambitious project. It, because it's so big, it could also invite another user group that, you know, I'm not sure we've discussed here. So first maybe to start with the dragon boats, you said they could be walked in, but where would they be stored?
Typically, well, we've seen them more certainly in the water elsewhere or along the docks here. My understanding that the adjacent projects, 232A Street, not our project, has made commitments publicly to store dragon boats within their below grade parking structure.
I see. Okay. So they walk from that project to here along the Harbor Walk is the vision?
Presumably, yeah, we have not discussed the actual mechanics of that operations with the dragon boat groups, but as an additional note, we, our channel side project is also committing to square footage within our future garage for storage of additional equipment, not large enough for the boats themselves, but this additional accessories, paddles, life jackets, other equipment they need, but there's square footage dedicated to them for that use.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, with with a puzzle being solved by different projects at different times, there's always the risk that if one of the pieces of the puzzle isn't quite coming through as per commitment, then what happens to the entire puzzle as a whole? Yeah, without storage, I think there would be a problem here. With such a large inviting space, you probably also can see people just picnicking on this. Just going down there, sitting down, having a meal or whatever, right?
Yep.
So it's something that is inevitable, something to plan for. Chapter 91 does include public restrooms and those will be in these buildings, they assume?
Yes.
Correct. Yes, we make commitments to pop the restrooms in a number of the buildings.
Yeah. And the building construction is tied up with the dock construction, I think I heard earlier. Is that correct?
Not necessarily, but they, they, the timing is such that, you know, this dock isn't going to be constructed before the landside improvements, right? Or be impacts either way. It's an order of operations rather than
I see.
More than anything.
Okay, there's no legal connections or other sort of connections between the buildings and the dock other than order of operations?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's the the chapter 91 licenses which cross reference each other.
I see. Yeah, that, yeah, I understand. But how are people launching the art now? They definitely have like pretty large floating pieces of art.
Yes, my understanding is some of them.
Yeah, I was just to say, Commissioner Condon, if you don't mind, maybe we could stick to this site, what's gonna happen?
That sounds good.
A little late. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay. So the gangway, how much does it angle and how does it deal with the water level change?
I can talk to that if you'd like. So you you've got, as Eric kind of mentioned at the beginning, there's kind of like three components to it. You, the, if you're looking at this picture, the lightest inshore section is fixed. So that's those piles supported and fixed. And then there's a hinge when it goes to the slightly darker section and that goes down to the to the floats, where you've got the four piles on each of the corners from that. So that, that is a, that's a hinged ramp section. So that will change in steepness as the tide goes up and down from that.
I'm just wondering what that quantification of the angle is because I've seen on the east Boston side, the hinge actually break when the water level rises so much. So how is this taken into consideration, increases the water level to that extent?
Yeah. So so obviously we've modeled it with different stages of the tide and in the future from that. And so making sure that the hinge shouldn't, shouldn't, you know, break per se, it's fixed on one end and not necessarily loose, but not attached on the other from it, but making sure there's enough clearance. The wheels or underneath or the rollers underneath it at the, at the, the outshore end. When it's in the highest, you know, position, you know, from that, that there's enough clearance for the structure underneath it, so it's not hitting, you know, from that. Most of the, most of the issues with any kind of movement or breaking of the hinges occurs with the, with the kind of movement you get. You know, with the piles as it goes, as it kind of, there's obviously a slight tolerance within the piles, you know, from that. So that's where the stresses are highest on the hinges from that, rather than the actual up and down from the tidal motion. It's normally the side to side from that.
I see. Okay. Last question, I think I'm just, I'm just trying to get some more clarification on Commissioner Sullivan's question there. The city's plan for the Birm and this plan, what, where's the alignment?
Well, the dock is connecting to that Harbor Walk segment that's part of the channel side project. The channel side project incorporates bluntly the the profile, the elevation, the design flood elevation of that Birm. And in fact, I think it's a little bit higher than what the city had proposed. It is essentially a landscape treatment that facilitates public use of that open space rather than just having a Birm structure there. So again, the dock itself doesn't fundamentally alter the channel side project, which in turn will construct the flood resilience infrastructure as envisioned by the channel side project, which is, you know, informed by the city's four-point channel resiliency infrastructure design.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Estes Smartziazi? Is he still with us? Did he drop off? Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry, there was, there was noise in my background. I was trying to be polite and then forgot about it. My, my initial concerns had have been, have already been discussed on this sort of nighttime safety. Sounds like you're, you're on that as part of the 91 licensing. And then the, you know, the potential for folks driving on it at any time, and it sounds like you're also on that in terms of the actual environmental impacts. It seems like you've covered it. I did, I was pleased to see that Commissioner Sullivan noticed the excessive shading of, computer shading of rockway in his outfall there. So.
I can assure you, we won't, we won't be touching the outfall.
But please make sure that the person doing the engineering drawings doesn't get carried away with the cobbling.
We're in good hands with Charlie. He's pretty familiar with Commissioner Sullivan's, he has some prudic nature. So. Okay, so we do have a comment here from Mr. Covert. You'll have to deal with public demand access, motorboats and sailboats. That would be a chapter 91 issue. I'll add to, to be brief, the clearance under the bridges in the four-point channel preclude much demand for anything larger than canoes and kayaks in this area. But we expect that this facility will be used for human powered craft only. Okay, understood. Okay. And then I don't know, Mr. Log is on, I don't see his hand up. I don't know if he wanted to say anything. He did submit the letter and we went through it at the beginning of the hearing. There's a hand up. Okay. So, okay, Mr. Log? You have to unmute yourself.
Couple, working?
Here we go. Now we got you.
Couple places to unmute. Yeah, I just wanted to, I used the word fill on the letter. We probably should have said rip rap, not fill. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
And again, yes, we'll, we'll work through all the other type issues with our related deal.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Eleanor, I don't see anyone else.
Good evening, Commissioners. I know it's been a long evening for you. Just a couple, since we've got in conversations about the actual use of the dock. I just wanted to point out that, yeah, we, the dock has multiple uses in terms of, yes, from public art, but also whatever small craft that we can't even project today that might be using it also. Right currently, if there's a water raft situation, the other dock that was asked about sort of how these complement each other, they, they will put in a rubber raft and with an engine and this would, this dock would obviously be much easier than the other dock to access and get to the water in any type of water rescue. And then the other thing that just a really quick, small thing since it came up in conversation and thinking about a gate, we've had, we've had issues at the other pier where people have come back and been locked out. So I would just say any type of gate would need to have a mechanism for as people have been out on the water coming in later that they can also access and get back onto land. So just a couple of quick thoughts for consideration as the interaction between land and, and, and channel through the dock is considered. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, sir. And I'll just make the comment that we're, we're not the gatekeepers here for gates. That would be a chapter 91 license. So if you have concerns about that, make sure you get your comments in during your licensure. I don't see anything else. Eleanor, any emails?
No emails on this other than the letter from Gillette, which we've already discussed a few times.
Yep. Okay, great. Thank you. So that I entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions and close the hearing?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Renee?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smartziazi?
Aye.
And I bought I, that carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. There have been two continuances, continue to notice of intent for DEP file number 0061996 and Boston file number 2024-021 and notice of intent for DEP file number 0062042 and Boston file number 2025-014. We will now begin our regular meeting. The first item on the agenda, a couple of certificates of compliance. The first one is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061304 from the U.S. National Park Service for the Bulkhead Stabilization of Pier Two, 65 Chelsea Street in Charlestown, the Navy Yard in Charlestown, resource areas, land under ocean, coastal bank. Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Yes, so this was a project which was permitted by the Conservation Commission, but I believe funding ran out and other circumstances resulted in it never commencing. So no work has actually been done on the site. And we conducted a site visit to confirm that in fact, no work has been done on the site. There are some photos in the drive folder in case the commission wants to see those, and I'm also happy to answer any questions. Based on the fact that there's nothing new here, we aren't recommending any perpetual maintenance conditions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from any commissioners? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
One, one, sorry, one quick question. I mean, the stuff that's there is debris. I don't know if it's like construction debris per se, but how does that work in terms of just that's what the owner can keep next to the watershed and in unsecured fashion?
Yeah, if, if there's ever a concern around, you know, various things ending up in resource areas, I think that that's something that we could address through either a notice of probable violation or an enforcement order if, if there's concerns around negative impacts to resource areas as a result of materials not being stored properly. I, I think my thought was that since the work never commenced and, and most of the conditions are related to prior to construction or during construction and then are added on as perpetual maintenance conditions, I thought that they might not quite fit here, but I understand if the commission wants to go in a different direction with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, there's, there's a couple of examples, especially the former Lake State Mental Health Hospital where we did make them like remove debris from the isolated wetlands and stuff like that. Like there was like motorcycles and fridges, even though they didn't then commence, I think. But I, yeah, I don't need to die on this hill. I was just more curious than something else.
Yeah, it's interesting. I mean, the I would say, I live in the Navy Yard, our relationship with the National Park Service right now is not what it was in the past. Most of the leadership has been asked to leave and they've been gone for a few months and there's no one in, well, there are people in charge, but the, there's been no replacement or replacements, I should say. Though, I mean, Eleanor, it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world to go back and say, you know, they'd like you to remove that debris and then they'll issue the COC and see what happens. You never know. I mean, they might invoke federal supremacy. And then I don't know what we do then, but you know, it might be worth a shot.
I can ask, yeah. I, I think. Yeah, I guess thinking about what we saw in our site visit, I, I, you know, see that there, there is debris there and, and you know, there are things that could end up in the water similar to other places along the coast. I guess my only concern is that if, if this project wasn't done due to lack of funding, I don't know if you know, they would have the resources to do that. That being said, that's not a reason to not ask. So I could, I could check with them and see, see what the status is.
Yeah. And then the second, the second part of this is, do we withhold the COC to use it as leverage? And my honest evaluation of that is it's probably very little leverage over MPS. So maybe it makes sense to go ahead, issue the certificate of compliance and then Eleanor, you go back and explain to them the enforcement. The enforcement, um, issue that might come up.
And if we, so I mean, I and I guess another point here is that if we do include the perpetual maintenance conditions, at least the ones that involve. Not allowing, um, any debris to migrate into resource areas, that's, you know. More leverage potentially, but the COC has now been issued, but as a reminder, here are the conditions, um, and, you know, here are the things we're concerned about on site.
Now you're thinking like a lawyer. That's perfect. Have leverage before that would give us leverage if we put that as a perpetual maintenance condition. Sound good, Commissioner?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good compromise and, yeah, hopefully achieves the results everybody wants.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to, uh, issue the certificate of, um, compliance for DP phone number zero zero six thirteen oh four. With a perpetual maintenance condition that, um. There needs to be debris control to prevent debris from. Um, I don't know, uh, entering, uh, resource areas.
I'll move that.
Give a second.
Well, second.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Laney.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Condon.
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smagiazzi.
Aye.
Uh, and I vote aye. I carry six nothing. Thank you. Okay, second one, a little bit more complicated. Okay, uh, request for a certificate of compliance for DP file number zero zero six one five six three from TRC. Companies on behalf of N Star Electric Company, DBA, Ever Source Energy Service Company for K Street. Substation, uh, number three eighty-five modifications project located at five hundred East First Street in South Boston. Resource areas line subject to coastal storm flowage. Uh, Elena, you have some color for this one?
I do, yes. It looks like there was, um, some sort of miscommunication administratively. Um, when this project filed, they, the applicant identified all of the appropriate resources, um, or resource areas, which included. LSCSF, uh, in addition to two, um, buffer zones, one of them is to coastal bank. The other one is to coastal beach or title flat. Um, for whatever reason, that wasn't included, uh, it was, it was addressed in parts of the permit. But not in the description that we usually use, like the little blurb that the commission uses on the cover letter at the, um, on the header. Of the conditions. So, um, when we noticed this in the public notice, we only listed LSCSF because that was what was included in the original. Notice, um, that being said, throughout the applicant has been consistent about which resource areas this project is in. Um, we agree that it's within a hundred feet of the coastal bank and coastal beach slash title flat. Um, and so just reading into the record that it is in LSCSF as well as those two buffer zones, which again, the, um, the applicant has. Has been consistent with that in their ASBILs as well. Um, and we also conducted a site visit for this project. Everything seems to be, um, constructed according to the plans as they were permitted. Uh, there are still a number of, um, open permits on this site, so so the. The site itself is not completely done with the construction, but this particular portion of the substation is complete. Um, and we would also recommend, uh, issuing a certificate of compliance with perpetual maintenance conditions. Numbers twenty-six, thirty-two, forty-five and fifty-eight.
Okay, uh, any questions? Okay, uh, Commissioner Sullivan, this is one of those pesky Scrivener errors, apparently. Ellen at twenty-six, thirty-two, forty-five and what else?
Apologies, yes, twenty-six, thirty-two, forty-five and fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, okay. So to entertain a motion to issue a request, uh, yeah, issue a certificate of compliance for DEP. Phone number zero zero six one five six three with, um, the perpetual maintenance conditions remaining intact. Those being, uh, conditions twenty-six, thirty-two, forty-five and fifty-eight.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Laney.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Condon.
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smartziazi.
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six nothing. Um, thank you, Elena. You don't have any administrative updates?
No admin updates and, um, no meeting minutes to vote on during this hearing either, but, um, they'll be ready for Utah Parker for the next hearing.
Okay, so that leads us to straight path to the motion to adjourn by acclamation. Any objections?
None.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I just want to say, uh, thank you to staff. We've had some very heavy meetings. Uh, the last few, uh, hearings and, uh, to get all these items on the agenda is, uh. Nothing short of a miracle. Uh, so, uh, I don't think I say it enough, but thank you. Uh, to everyone who's involved in putting this together and making us look good.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We have a a great team and a great commission.
Great, thank you. Okay, have a good night.